A sec.
It's all set.
And hold on a sec, I just gotta make sure you're coming out of the right channel. Get you on my audio monitor. Hello? Okay. Sorry, could someone speak again, just to make sure?
Hello?
There you are. Yep, sounded good. All right, thanks again, guys. Have a good meeting.
You too. Have a good night.
Bye. Yep.
Hi, Joel.
Hello?
Hi, Ursula. Everyone's cutting it close tonight.
Yeah. Ursula and Carrie had a nice, like, 25-minute break between meetings.
Oh, boy.
Hi, Curtis.
Hi, Curtis. I know Julia will be joining us late.
And Steve, oh, there's Steve right now. I didn't know if he was gonna be on early or jump on later.
So we're waiting for Carrie and Jose.
There's Joe and Jose. Hi, Jose. Hi, Joe.
Hey, Jake.
Wait another minute for Carrie. She didn't, she said she was coming, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we were all together up until not too long ago at the finance committee.
Look over another minute, and then we can get started without her. And Julia should be joining us around 7:00. Okay, do you think we should get started, Jake, or should we?
That's, that's just take maybe 30 more seconds if you don't want.
Not at all.
The other thing is, the first few items are just, you know, reading the statement, calling to order and whatnot.
That is true.
We can just do that part right now.
Yeah, I think Christina, Steve's right. If, if we want to get going, I don't think we get into, to, you know, I'm sure Carrie would like to be if there's, if there's, comments, you know, public comment, but, but it'll take a couple of minutes to get through everything else. So I think we'll be okay.
Okay. I would like to call the Mount Graylock Regional School District School Committee to order. It is Thursday, August 12th, 2021, and it is 6:03 PM. We are meeting virtually via Zoom. And this meeting will take place virtually pursuant to the law signed by Governor Baker on June 16th, 2021, an act extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, which includes an extension until April 1st, 2022 of the remote meeting provisions of his March 12th, 2020 executive order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. This meeting will also be broadcast on Willingette TV Channel 1302 in Williamstown and posted to the Mount Graylock Regional School District YouTube page within 24 hours of the meeting. At Mount Graylock Regional School District, our mission is to create a community of learners working together in a safe and challenging learning environment that encourages restorative-based processes, respect, inclusive diversity, courtesy, integrity, and responsibility through high expectations and cooperation, resulting in lifelong learning and personal growth. Next up on our agenda is public comment. Hi, Carrie, thank you for joining us. We do not have anyone signed up for a public comment. I see a few folks in the audience. If anyone wants to make public comment, you can raise your virtual hand. Okay, not seeing any public comments, so we can move on to the next item on our agenda.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I'm having trouble raising my hand.
Oh, okay.
All right, can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can.
All right, thank you. My name is Matt Smith. Use he/him pronouns. I'm here in Williamstown on the ancestral lands of the Stockbridge-Muncie Band of Mohegan Indians. Also a parent of students at both Wes and Mount Graylock. And commenting this evening on the mask policy that's being voted on shortly. So first, just wanted to say thank you and commend the superintendent and everyone else who's had a part in advocating for everyone to be masked, regardless of vaccination status at every grade level. Just want to say I deeply appreciate and support that. The part of the policy that I'm having some challenges with is around the, when students are eating and when students are on mask breaks. So I would just strongly advocate that you clarify the policy to include that social distancing will be observed while students are eating, social distancing will be observed during mask breaks. When I read the superintendent's letter of August 12th, the part that gave me some pause was the idea of common sense distancing. I think if this pandemic has taught us anything, is that we don't all have a shared understanding of what common sense public health measures are. And it just seems like an unnecessary risk to have students unmasked less than six feet apart. I'm a former educator. I've been on cafeteria duty. I understand how challenging that is. Even when there's not a pandemic, and given the riots that we're seeing with the Delta variant, just really would hope that you would make that clarification, that anytime students are unmasked, that they will be socially distanced. So thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else for public comment? Okay, I'm seeing none. So moving on to the next item on our agenda, which is the approval of meeting minutes for July 15th, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve the July 15th, 2021 minutes?
So moved.
Curtis moves. Do I have a second? Ursula, seconds? Uh, any discussion?
This is Steve. I had one comment on one of the sets of meetings. I'm just pulling that up right now. I can't remember which one it was. And we're doing which one right now?
There's only one for, and it's the July 15th, 2021.
Right. So the only item I have is that, I think, once or twice, it says a lengthy discussion followed. And I think in future minutes, it would be valuable to at least summarize some of the items brought up in lengthy discussions. It's not as important for meetings of the full committee that are regularly scheduled or recorded, because you can always get a transcript online. But it's, 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 it's easier for people when they're looking to have, you know, some summary of what was being discussed in detail.
Okay, thank you. I do have a comment from, or a question from Julia that she submitted on page three. The third paragraph down where it says, "In regard to new agenda requests, MASC does not recommend including this as a standard agenda item." I think this sentence may actually belong up under policy that, she thought it might belong under the first paragraph on that page. I don't know if you guys have any recollection of that.
Sorry, Christina, where exactly are you?
So on page three of the meeting minutes, about halfway down the page, it says, in regard, it's right after it says, "See green added content context." It says, "In regard to new agenda requests, MASC does not recommend including this as a standard agenda item." And she thought that probably belonged under the agenda format, paragraph at the very top of page three.
It does appear that way.
Okay. So we can amend the notes to reflect that. Anything else from anybody?
Sorry, this, this is under the agenda format. But...
It's sort of, almost looks like it's under minutes.
I think though...
And it may have been the way we were having the discussion, because we were jumping around a bit.
Oh, I see what you're, but it's the same policy.
It's the same policy.
Policy B E D G, agenda format.
Agenda format and one, and, and then we were sort of in a subsection at the time about minutes.
As, yeah, but it's all under the same policy discussion.
One's B E D G and one's B E D B.
Okay, I'll leave it to you. I don't, I'm a little confused on this. So whatever you guys think is fine.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor? Roll call vote, alphabetically, please. Conry, aye?
I'm standing aye.
And by an aye.
Green aye.
Aye.
Did we lose Ursula?
Yeah, I can't hear her or see her.
Can you hear me?
Now we can hear you.
Sorry, I must not have been projecting enough. I did say Malloy, aye.
Okay, thank you. That motion passes. Okay, next up on our agenda are the principal updates. And, and under A, we have Lanesboro Elementary's, which is Nolan Pratt. So I will turn it over to Nolan.
I just got disconnected and reconnected really quickly, so I'm sorry. I had to make a last-minute hike up to the school, because power is out at my house. But I have a brief update for all of you. Summer programming went well. We have 15 students join our education, general education, summer programming, which we broke into two cohorts. We had a K through 2 group and a 3 through 6 group. 16 students participated in our special education programming. We also operated an EL program for our, for four of our students. And so this is being our first year of their general education program. It was successful. I would have liked to see more people join. However, given the school year that we had last year, I completely understand people needing a break from school. With all that summer schooling, I'm sure people want to know how we're going to assess our students when they get back into the school. We'll be using a couple of different assessments. We'll be using FastBridge, Dibbles. So FastBridge is an assessment tool, which kind of collects social emotional data, math, and ELA as necessary to collect quick snapshots of the data, plus Dibbles, which is an ELA, reading comprehension, quick assessment, and then also curriculum-based assessments to narrow in on a snapshot of where they come in. But what we're going to do is continue to analyze student work through the first quarter to clarify and fill out that picture of where our students are at. And as we identify where our students are at, we have these math and ELA intervention periods each day. And in these periods, teachers will utilize student learning data to create small groups to reteach, reinforce, and enrich student learning. And during these times, we will also utilize the reading specialist and math interventionist to really minimize the student-to-teacher ratio. Some other things that people might be wondering about is, we're still, we are still in the middle of a pandemic, and what happens if my child gets COVID and they have to quarantine? We're going to handle this like we used to handle it with a long-term illness. We will collect work for your student and send it home, either in a packet or electronically, and we'll stay in, in contact with that student to make sure if there's any questions, we can answer them, and make sure that they do not fall behind. And lastly, we have three new hires that we brought in in the late spring, early summer. We have a new school adjustment counselor, Jennifer Renzi, who will be working with curriculum in the classroom, will help build relationships with all students. Michelle Thompson, who is a half-time pre-k teacher and half-time special education teacher. And lastly, Melissa Marquetti, who is our new life skills special education teacher. So I just dumped a lot of information on you. What questions do you have for me? I see Steve has his hand up. Ursula, Steve, you can go first.
Okay, thank you. The, the only question I have is, I know sometimes it's challenging knowing what the involvements are going to be in kindergarten, as people often sign up late, and just wanted to know how are the numbers looking in Lanesboro?
I can pull that up in a GIF.
Thank you.
Right now, we have a total of 26 students across two sections, with two groups of 13 in kindergarten.
Beautiful. And what's the ideal age or age range roughly?
For kindergarten?
Yeah, 13 seems great.
13, I would think 13 is probably a little high for that, for that age group. I'd probably go for 10 to 12. However, we can definitely manage with 13.
Perfect, thank you.
Ursula, oh, go ahead, Steve.
Oh, the, the other question I had is, are there any other areas where you think you might need additional staff as we come out of last year?
That is a great question. Um, we do have some class sizes that are on the brink. However, they're trending down. We have a class of 24 right now, but it looks like it might end up being 23. We have a class of 25, which looks like it's going to be down to 20, 23 as well, as we start the school year, which is, and they're upper grades. So it's just right on that brink of needing two sections. I do not think we are there yet. But give it time.
Good, thank you so much.
Ursula, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I did have a question, but related to also something you just said. Did you say that 10 to 12 is ideal for a kindergarten class?
I would think so. I like them small, with all of them when they come in. The smaller the better, right?
Yeah, no, I was just making sure I understood. My question from before was, you mentioned a school adjustment counselor. Is that a second school adjustment counselor now, or is Mrs. Viall still there as well? Okay.
Yes, Mrs. Viall is still here. She's also our school psychologist. And with all of the, with the impact of the pandemic on students' social and emotional health, having that extra support is really going to help our students return to, to understand themselves in this new setting. Other questions? All right, well, I'll hand it off to Cindy, who I believe is next.
Hi, everybody. How are you? So, much like my always, my constant position after Nolan, you are going to hear very similar things. Summer programming, for our first time out trying to do a combination of special education programming and general education programming, was pretty incredible. I know that across the board, we had 28 students receiving special education services, 27 general educations students, and I think ultimately, the feedback that came back from staff and from families at the end of that was how valuable they felt like the program was. It gave students the opportunity to, you know, have an increase in learning over the summer. And also, the teachers really felt like what it also helped with was giving students who may not necessarily qualify for special education services, a boost during the summer that they might not have traditionally received. I also think that staff was really grateful to have the opportunity to, you know, get some extra time with students who need help in math and in language arts. And I know that looking forward to next year, we've gotten incredibly positive feedback from staff about wanting to continue a model where we are servicing special education students, general education students, but also looking at also providing enrichment programs for our students, because we always want to be consistently reminded of, are we meeting the needs of all of our students within the district? But overall, our summer programming went really well. I'm grateful for the teachers and the staff who were able to come in each day and work with our kids. Similar to Nolan, we will be using a variety of assessments to address the gaps when our kids come back. But I have to say, you know, while we're in the middle of a pandemic, this is what we do. This is what we're really good at. Every year, pandemic or no pandemic, every single school teacher, when they get a new set of children, is assessing gaps, because we always want to make sure that we are meeting kids where they are. We will use our traditional programs of, you know, Dibbles and FastBridge. We will use informal assessment, assessments. We'll look at different data, but ultimately, this is our wheelhouse. We look at kids and we try to figure out what do they need best, and then we address the instruction based upon those needs. We're fortunate to have a math interventionist, a reading interventionist, but we're also fortunate to have a staff where our teachers and our paraprofessionals are committed to meeting the needs of the kids wherever they are. And I have to be honest, if we could get through last year, I pretty much feel like we could get through anything. So I'm confident in the ability of the people within our building to meet the needs of our kids. And similar to Nolan, again, we, we both have the, a common plan that if students were to be out due to COVID, we will address that much like we would address any student with an illness where we're providing work. But our teachers are also in constant contact with families, and that's a practice that will be continuing through this next school year. Big information as far as enrollment for me, I feel like my enrollment is exploding a little bit. In grades one through six, I've had 35 new students who have enrolled since the end of the school year. At kindergarten, I've had 53 students enroll. So just from last year until, you know, this moment, I've got 88 new students who have been registering. I use the word new a little bit loosely. We have some students who left us last year for a myriad of reasons. So some of them are returning, but we also have a tremendous amount of new families who are joining us in town. I am carefully watching with Dr. McCandless our kindergarten numbers. Our kindergarten numbers right now were at 53, and that's 17, 18, and 18 over three sections. It's definitely higher than what it normally is in Williamstown. So we're going to continue to monitor that to make sure, again, that we are doing our best to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our kids and of our staff. And the biggest things for me as far as staffing, I was able to hire an assistant principal. I'm grateful to have someone else on board. Travis Perro is my new assistant principal. He started on Wednesday, has probably had the best attitude for somebody walking in with 48 hours. His first words were, "What can I do to make your life easier? How can I help? Tell me what you need me to do." And there could not be a more powerful set of statements to come into a new position than those. He's been a welcomed addition. I'm grateful for his experience that he has in, you know, in special education with social emotional development and also behavioral modification programs. And that's something that we don't currently have at Williamstown. So I'm really encouraged to know that we have someone with a new skill set to bring with them into our school. Other new hires, I have hired three classroom teachers. Kathleen Iga will be one of our new sixth-grade teachers, along with Katrina Matfucio. And I've hired a new fourth-grade teacher, Hope Perro. And then so far, I have three new paras, Angie Hillman, Sarah Brill, and Rebecca Mullen. We are still currently interviewing. I have two more paraprofessional positions to fill, as well as a half-time special education teacher. So we're very much still in the thick of planning and hiring for next year, but, you know, this is what we do. So I'm pretty confident that we'll continue to build, you know, an excellent staff at Williamstown. Are there any questions? Jose?
Thank you, Cindy. And I might have just cut in front of Steve as he, as he put his hand up. But this is a question that Steve, I think, similarly asked Nolan. You know, the kindergarten numbers seem quite large, and I appreciate that you and Jake are watching. What, what are, what are our options if the numbers go up by a few more students? What, what options do we have?
So it's, it's a very real option that we would have to open a fourth section and hire another kindergarten teacher. That's, that's the bottom line of what we would look at.
And then just as a follow-up, is there, with the school year rapidly approaching, when do we, when do you know, or when do you suspect that you'll, you'll, you'll be in a position to more confidently decide what, what's going to happen with regard to those, those three or four sections?
And I'm going to punt that one to Jake.
Thank you. I unmuted myself, so I could get ready to receive the punt. I, I will respectfully acknowledge Mr. Pratt's notion that 10 is the ideal size for kindergarten. And certainly, the smaller the better is, is a, is a pathway to go that is in some ways hard to argue with. I'm not sure that the, the literature that's out there would, would absolutely support that. I think many school districts would look at having fewer than 20 kindergartners and be thrilled at that. So personally, I, I am not thrown by the notion of 17 or 18, but, but it is a, it's, it's, but I'm also not the teacher that's going in to teach those, those 18 five-year-olds every day, nor the, nor the paraprofessional that's helping out. So I'm, I'm very aware of that. I, I would say that, that we're probably a week away from really wanting to make a final decision. Cindy and I are keeping an eye on it and also discussing it almost daily. And, and we, we may not be done yet. We, we know we have some new housing opportunities that are, that are wonderfully opening up on Cole Avenue. We, we know we have realtors still showing houses and some people that are, thought they might be moving away from Williamstown for various reasons, who are really looking hard to find new living situations that keep their kids in our, in our school in Williamstown. So we're probably about a week away from really, when we get, you know, into that third week of August, we, we really do have to fish or cut away our bait. I, I'm pretty confident of our ability to attract good teachers and high-quality staff to work with our children, even at that late age, at, at both of our elementary schools. But we're probably a week away from really needing to, 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 you know, go over the, the pencil marks that we have so far in Sharpie and make them a little more permanent. Jose?
Yeah, thank you.
Steve? Steve, did you still have a question?
Yeah, so just, you know, first of all, thank you, Jose, because you've just reduced my question by about 95%. And so the twist I will add is, do you feel that there is going to be different optimal numbers of students? This year, as we're still dealing with, you know, the pandemic and the pandemic...
This year, as we're still dealing with the pandemic and the pandemic response, as to how many kindergarteners you want in a physical classroom?
I think that's always a concern. I think that's part of our ongoing discussion that Dr. McCandless and I continue to have. What are we comfortable with? What can we do safely? While also, you know, the ultimate goal being, what are we, what can we do to make sure we're meeting the needs of our staff and our students? So that's why, you know, that's a piece that honestly, we are talking about daily because we want the safety piece to be there as well.
Thank you.
Ursula?
Yes. So first, I just want to make a comment. Six years ago, when my oldest son was going into kindergarten at Lanesboro Elementary, there were 24 kindergartners registered. And the tipping point was the 25th, when we went to the town meeting and begged for a second section, which we got. But I find it really comforting that we're now looking at, you know, no more than maybe 20 or whatever. You know, it feels like a more reasonable number than 25 kindergartners. My question, though, was, that sounded to me, without knowing, that sounded like a lot of staff to add in a year. Is that normal, or was it staff having departed because of COVID? Or do you normally add that many staff in a new school year? And maybe I just don't know that.
Well, I think that's a really great question. I would say, you know, when I started at Williamstown Elementary School as a teacher seven years ago, it was the first round of new hires that Williamstown Elementary had ever brought in. You know, and the staffing that's coming in for this school year, we had to open up another section of our sixth grade, which meant a new position. We had many retirements, and we had a lot of our paraprofessional staff move on to go to grad school or go to master's programs. So it just happened to be, you know, a perfect blend of people, you know, moving to different, you know, facets of their lives. This is, this feels like a lot to me, but also, it's incredibly mindful. This is the first time I've done it. So for me, it does feel like a lot, but I also know that some of that notion is because we're coming off of a year that has been so unusual that it feels like I'm hiring staff left and right. But when I really look at it, we've had retirements, we're adding a section, and we just have our paraprofessionals who, you know, are moving on to new things. Any other questions? Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Well, let me turn this light off. I should have looked at that beforehand. Hey, folks, good evening. So I'm going to follow this a similar format as Cindy and Nolan. So first, talking about summer programming. The, well, it was, the opportunities we had were both warranted and welcome. And we ran, in addition to our special ed programming that we typically run, we ran programming for five weeks from July to August 6. It had two components. The first component was credit-bearing courses, and the second component was enrichment and remedial classes. Sorry, I'm on my phone and things are dinging away here. I don't know if you can hear that. So I was very impressed with the dedication and the work ethic of our students during summer programming. They definitely set themselves up for academic success this coming school year. So we had over 20 students that took courses for credit that included in-person learning by Mount Raylock staff in American the World and English classes and in academic skills classes. We also had Plato or Ed mentum learning, which is an online platform where we had a Mount Raylock staff host students that took courses in geometry, world history, and algebra. For enrichment, the remediation and the enrichment classes, we had seven one-week camps in which over 40 students attended, including rising seventh graders. So those were the one-week camps, again, taught by Mount Raylock staff, were programming, simple robotics A and B, visual arts A and B, the fundamentals of algebra and geometry, MCAS, SAT prep, and what else did we have? And we had a language. So I'm looking forward to it. It was a great opportunity for our students, both those that needed to catch up, that had some, had some gaps, and those that wanted to have an enriching opportunity. So I look forward to potential future summer opportunities for our students. And kind of going right into the next, the next point I want to talk about, about plans for assessing our students beginning of the year. Well, it started already. So we had made recommendations to parents and students about our summer opportunities. And the best tool we have for assessing students, just like Cindy mentioned, our teachers. And they do that all year, but they'll take specific note this year to make sure to engage our existing system, which includes making recommendations to our student support team. And the student support team can then track any trends or make recommendations to the teacher, to the student, or to the families that are specific to the needs that child. And if we see any trends throughout the student body, we'd be able to make more global or broad-stroke adjustments to learning. That being said, we also plan to use our, to take a deep dive into our standardized testing. So we do have a host of tests that all our students always, always take. And so we're just going to use that data to complement the progress that the students make this first quarter. So some of those learning gaps, if they are identified, how would we start filling them? Well, we did add, what we would do in a tiered process, and we did add a ELA and math skills course that would supplement the core content classes of whatever ELA or math class that students are in. We also added social emotional wellness classes for our seventh, eighth, and ninth grade that all those students will take. And we added some additional SCW electives for 10th through 12th graders. In addition, I mentioned the student support team in general. They are the group, they're the hub that would monitor and analyze the reports coming from students, the standardized reports, and make recommendations to the teachers or to me in general. And next up, we're going to talk about missed work. So we are not using Zoom this year, but we are using Canvas. So much like we, somebody said, like, kind of doing what we used to do pre-COVID, that's the same thing we're doing at the middle and high school. But on Canvas, assignments, our students will still be notified, have access to, and be able to turn in assignments much easier when they are home. So even though it's the same process, they most likely won't be, students won't be collecting packets from teachers of pieces of paper. Most of this stuff is still going to be online and right at the fingertips. So as long as a student has access to the internet, they'll be able to know what their assignments are when they're due and likely even see most of the teacher's notes. Let's see, so pending your questions, that's it for me. And I'm scrolling through. So Jose, the first one that came across. Yes, sir.
Yeah, thanks, Jake. And thank you for that, for that update. I've had a constituent, a parent of a student who attends the middle school. And I don't know if this is a product of the way parents were sending and picking up their kids from the school during the pandemic. But there's some concern about the ability for folks to leave the campus safely during that drop-off, pickup rush hour. Is that, is that something that you're hearing from other parents? And if so, are there, you know, discussions underway about how to better regulate traffic as folks come off of seven?
Okay, so you're talking about traffic on the main road there, on Route 7, in and out of 7. Yes, it has that, right, okay. I'm sorry, I was thinking like front steps. But yeah, it's, it's a scary intersection. I've had conversations with the former police chief. I've had conversations with the current police chief. We have gone to the DOT because it's a state road to advocate for something. And last, and based off of, we were told, and that's when they actually put up those yellow signs with the flashing lights recommending 35 miles an hour. They said that's all they could do because of the specs that they actually look at, like the distance of the line of sight, the slope of the hill. It does not, so per their specs, it fits the bill, and there's nothing more that they can do. But it does come up every few years, and just driving there every day, it's a scary parking lot. And yeah, so that's, that's the answer to that. I agree with them on that, Jose.
And just as a follow-up then, Jake, I appreciate that response. It sounds like it's a difficult, maybe an impossible problem to solve. But, you know, do you see the need for further conversations with, with, you know, the Williamstown Police or state DOT officials to consider, you know, workarounds for this, whether we, you know, I don't know, is there, and it is a question for Jake as well?
There's probably another Jake question. I mean, it wouldn't hurt. I know when, when we were designing the school, it was discussed about possibly having a secondary entrance or exit. And that never happened down on the property farther down the road. And one of the other, it was kind of sad, one of the other specs is that they said there wasn't enough accidents. If there were more accidents, that would raise their threshold to have something else done. And I don't know what those next steps were. I don't know if it's a light, I don't know if it's a permanent reduction in the speed limit versus just the recommended yellow signs. But I would say it would be worth, it would be worth asking. And I don't, I don't know, I'm assuming the powers-to-be would be the DOT. So that's something maybe that the school committee or the town can do. But I'm happy to help.
So now a way in from old Jake as opposed to young Jake. Thinking about the experience of our colleagues down Route 7 in Great Barrington, Berkshire Hills Monument Mountain Regional High School, which also sits right on Route 7, for years and years advocated for an actual stoplight. I will check in with their superintendent tomorrow and find out how they finally got through the challenges to getting something done. And we're certainly, if it's the will of the committee, we're certainly happy to reach out to the state authorities and begin that conversation. My recollection is that, you know, it did take something really bad happening in South County to finally get that moving and maybe even a financial agreement among the town, the regional school district, and the state to fund the solution. But we won't know any solutions unless we talk about it. So we're happy to do that because it is, it is, even in the summer, when it's really slow, that turn, you need to be thinking about it as you're trying to make that turn, particularly if you're northbound. And if you're southbound and turning in from toward Williamstown, you're really hoping that whoever is waiting to make that left turn is thinking and seeing you. So it's problematic. One thing that I have not found problematic, having, you know, come in basically around the start of the school day since November 2nd, and this is a real credit to the families that we serve, one thing that I have been incredibly pleasantly surprised by is the courtesy that people show when they are in the parking lot. Getting into the parking lot may be a hairy and scary situation, but remarkable courtesy by not only student drivers, parents, guardians, caretakers, but also kids walking in from the student parking lot. So we can, the community can take, the two communities that send children here, the three or four communities can take pats on the back for how safe it is once they get in because people watch out for one another. But we'll speak with the state about the actual entrance, see if there's anything we can do.
So Jake, I'm wondering if in the conversations with Williamstown Police, it has ever come up about actually having a traffic officer at the high points of entry and then exit? I don't, I know we have them for things like the school musical and big athletic events, and I know that there is a cost associated with that. But I'm wondering if that's ever been, ever been discussed?
It has, Carrie, in formal conversations, but it's, they only have a couple guys on shift and they're normally out working. And so they have an invite to come. And, you know, when they can come, they normally do, and they're either a presence there. But to get somebody there permanently, we'd have to hire them.
And then, other Jake, before moving on from the principal reports, we want to talk about the process for the school handbooks.
Yes, thank you for that opening, Carrie. So you all, I believe, the committee members are in possession of the school handbooks. I have a slight disagreement with the school district's attorney about the legality of the school committee approving those versus reviewing those. At the end of the day, he's an attorney, I'm not. So he says that they should be not only reviewed but voted on. A quick review of past year's minutes indicates that that's not necessarily been the tradition here. But for now, what I would ask you to do, if you have a chance, is to go through the handbooks. If you see things that you think need correcting or are not matching with your lived experience, you can certainly direct that feedback to me and carbon copy Stacy, and we will get that out to the principals. And then the principals will be sending out draft handbooks to their school communities, and then we will be reviewing those handbooks in September. And then the final handbooks will be posted to the website, which is the primary vehicle for where the handbooks reside anyway. So thank you for that, Carrie. And some of you have already sent in corrections, and that's been very helpful. And then another piece that we need to wrap our heads around is, and I don't think it's a matter of wrapping our heads around it. I think it's a matter of what process do we want to use? And I would like to speak with the principals about this. Just maybe doing some sort of activity to make sure that our handbooks are in keeping with with our policy manual. As the policy manual evolves, making sure that the handbooks are evolving alongside of the policy. So I'll speak with the principals about that, and I suspect I'll speak with some of you individually about that in the case. But, you know, a little bit of work to do with those. And I think we may work to get into the habit of having the handbooks presented in like July after a quick legal review by the Dupre Law Firm. And then that gives us July and August to really get them into the form that we, that they're as right as they can be to send out to our clients, the families we serve. Carrie, did you have a question?
Yeah, I think just to add to that, that the J policies, which are up on the website, are the policies related to, you know, that would be relevant to this conversation. And I know that there was work done during the full regionalization process to make the J policies relevant pre-K-12. But it would be worth some time, probably on the part of the policy subcommittee at some point, just to Probably on the part of the policy subcommittee at some point, just to, you know, however it's done with the manual, right? The policy manual should be aligned with the J policies and the J policy should be aligned with the policy manuals. And the J policy should also be reviewed to make sure that they're current because those are you know, online and accessible year round um to everybody.
Yeah.
So it's um.
And and for folks at, for folks at home, J pol- the the J section of the policy manual is the piece that pertains very specifically to students. It's where um things that really potentially impact students on a daily basis are housed within the uh within the policy manual. So definitely, and as we, as we do further work in uh DEI and B, we will certainly want to make sure that as the policy manual changes, the handbooks reflect that, or as the handbooks change, the policy manual may or may not need to reflect that. So you're you're right on point, Carrie.
Okay, I think we're ready to move on to the next agenda item, which is the superintendent report.
Good. Well, this this may take a little bit of time and I and I will thank you all in advance for your patience and and I think we're gonna kind of bring uh A and B um together uh for this, um both both of those agenda items. And um, I I would like to, with your permission, Christina, just do us uh uh partici- a a uh a brief um presentation, if I can.
Great.
Uh, just let me know, can everybody? I never quite trust the technology with this. I apologize for my uh luddite ways there. Let me just. So this is just a few slides, and it really just overviews what we're trying to do with our recommendations this year and uh and uh I I'm very grateful to Dr. Smith for for his comments during the public comment period because we uh we are really struggling with those same things where and where we're doing so without really much guidance from the Commonwealth itself. Uh, particularly from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed, which is fine because we're we're smart enough and work together well enough to to make our own way. But um I I do, I can't see if Dr. Smith's still on a meeting or not, but please rest assured and please rest assured to the many people who have weighed in on this over the past week or two that um we we are considering um lots and lots of things that were not particularly made crystal clear in the in the letter that was sent out to you, and there will be more to come. So obviously, our uh our our intention here, our aim in opening school this year is, as it always is, we want our kids to be well. We want their families to be well. We want our staff to be well. And we want the larger community that we serve, that we're supported by and in which we exist to be well. So um that health and wellness and safety in the midst of a pandemic are uh are are front and center on how we're approaching reopening. Um, sharing that spotlight of front and center is that we are really committed to keeping students in school in person five days a week for one hundred and eighty school days. Uh, I think we know the impact that uh that last year had on students. We know the impact that it had on families and everything from the 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 cohesiveness and the and the altogether wellness of families to their financial wellness in some cases. Uh, and we know the stress that that caused. And we know the stress that it caused our staff. Um, having to master new means of delivering uh instruction, new means of assessing students. And uh, at the end of the day, I think when we look at the data from the schools that we're in, both in Massachusetts and across country and around the world, when we look at the data of of schools that stayed in person, this can be done safely, this can be done well, and it can be done in ways that are respectful of primary aim number one, which is the health, safety and well-being of our students, staff, families and community. Uh, the safety of every child, every staff member, every family member of our students and our staff and their families. That's of course our top priority. But we really do, we we not only you know, the reality is right now, we don't have a legal mechanism to close down a classroom. We don't have a legal mechanism to uh close a school and move into remote. But more importantly than not having a a legal mechanism is the ethical mechanism of of just knowing that we cannot ask any of the parties that we serve and that we work with to do the work of educating kids to have a repeat of last year. Um, and and in addition to safety, in addition to keeping kids in school for a hundred and eighty days in person, we need school to actually feel like school. Um, we know that the things that anchor and tether kids, children, young people to their school are things like participation in band, in an orchestra and in chorus and in the fine arts. We know it's things like athletics and clubs. We know it's things like uh Shake and Co. Uh, at at uh i- i- in um in Williamstown. We know it's the relationships that they build with one another and among one another. We know that it's the relationships they build between uh young people and the adults that are there to care for them and to serve them and to educate them. Those are the anchors that we have to protect by being in school in person. So how do we get there? Uh, we go above and beyond for safety. Uh, I I was a bit taken aback when we had our initial meeting with the commissioner a couple of weeks ago and realized that we were really not going to get um statewide level guidance on much of what we were dealing with. Got over being flummoxed very quickly and began to work with our team about what was going to serve our community best. So we are going to follow guidance and mandates and recommendations that that uh that come from the state, but also that come from places like the American Academy of Pediatrics, that come from the uh United States Center for Disease Control. Um, and and we're going to listen to some of the local experts that we work with day in, day out as partners, including some people that are employees of this district to make sure that we are best supporting health for the whole community uh and that we're supporting kids being in school in safe ways. We're going to use good common sense. I do tend to agree with Dr. Smith, but sometimes common sense is not uh common in any way, shape or form. Um, but uh we are going to use common sense and we are going to stay vigilant in regards to to what the local data is telling us, where regional data, statewide data and national data is telling us. We are going to keep, as we always endeavor to do, open communications among everybody that cares about the work we do and everybody that cares about why we're here, the the people that we do the work on behalf of, our children. And um, and we're gonna ask people to remember that that practices like wearing a mask in school or at the store or anywhere else, it's not really about me, quote unquote. It's about being, it's about us. It's about um being a good friend and a good neighbor to the friends and neighbors that I or any of us will be interacting with. This is a good neighbor practice, to be protective of the people around us, including our own family, including friends, including fellow uh townspeople that we interact with, uh and everybody with whom I may interact or that you may interact with. Well, our recommendations, and there are certainly more to come. Uh, we are recommending that all students are masked in grades pre-K through grade twelve, with exceptions as outlined in policy EBCFA face coverings. Those um exceptions are uh really around students who, for documented health purposes or well-understood behavioral purposes, just simply cannot make it through a school day and be um and 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 successfully with a mask. Uh, we had very few of those last year, but we did have exceptions. We are working toward adults in the building doing the same thing, uh particularly on vaccinated adults. But we are recommending and we are working with our partners uh in the uh the the Magia, the the Mount Greylock Educators Association, that we are uh ideally going to be on the same page about all of us wearing masks. We've already started uh at the central office and for those of us that work in the school in the summer. Um, and we are requiring masks at this point, regardless of one's vaccination status. Uh, we are recommending that we continue to do voluntary pool testing for both students and staff. Uh, the 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 notion of poll testing has sort of been renamed by the Commonwealth. Uh, we're calling it routine COVID safety checks now. You'll probably hear Joe say that a time or two during his presentation. These will not be required. Again, I'll put in the caveat at this point for participation in athletics or after-school activities and clubs. But we may come to a time where we feel that's necessary um not only for uh health and wellness, but also to 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 just make sure that we have enough people participating in this, that we are ensuring health and wellness. Um, and of course, you know, bullet B under that bullet is that this may change as our situation evolved. We're going to, of course, continue to promote good handwashing practices, and we are going to continue to have uh hand sanitizer widely available. And um at the elementary levels, actually being very proactive about making sure students are using hand sanitizer. We are going to promote common sense approaches to social distancing. We are not necessarily at all times enforcing a strict six feet or or what we followed last year per the state guidelines of three feet. We'll come back to that at the end of the of the conversation. Um, but uh, you know, re- realistically, to have all of our students in classrooms, we're we're definitely not able to maintain six feet. We will work and endeavor to have the three feet because people are masked. And uh and lunches, we are still working on. Snack time, we are still working on. Uh, mask breaks, we are still working. Uh, there's a new protocol that is in place this year for close contact. People who have been within proximity for fifteen minutes or longer with somebody who is a definite uh COVID positive case. We are not requiring individuals to quarantine who are in that situation. I don't even believe that's that's required now in uh in the state setting. Um, we do have a new protocol. It's called test and stay. And so parents will have the option, students will have the option to take an Abbott Labs Binax Now test for five school days in a row prior to entry into the building. Um, but in in lieu of and getting a negative result on that in lieu of quarantining. Um, I don't know if any of you have used those at home. You can grab them at Walgreens. You can grab them, grab them at CVS. Um, we are still waiting for for final instructions on how that's all going to work from the state. But uh ideally, this will keep more kids in school for more time because quarantining in in many instances has gone away. Uh, there will be no Zoom program available. Absences will be absences. I believe this will ultimately drive that snow days will be snow days. Um, and we will not have a distance learning program uh as we did last year with the uh Remote Academy. We will certainly continue to bang the drum of asking every single person that uh that that we serve to please consider uh getting vaccinated if you are medically able to do so. Uh, and there will certainly be more to come around recommendations and guidance as we march closer to the beginning of the school year. Just a couple of words about test and stay. Uh, I won't take much time with this. You will remember that we had lots of students who were who were quarantining last year and missing in-person school time because of that. This was, I think wisely, the state's uh response to that. And so we do have the test and stay program that will allow us to bypass quarantining, but but still work really hard to make sure that we are keeping COVID positive individuals out of the building and out of contact with our students and our staff. Uh, and certainly, there will be much, much more to come. Uh, the 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 questions that we're really wrestling with right now, although there's there's probably a dozen more as the hour and ten minutes that Joelle and Nolan and Cindy and I spent together sort of wrestling with these things earlier today would indicate. How will we do things like instrumental music? Uh, how will we do things like singing? And and how will we allow important events like concerts and the musical to happen? Um, in reality, not just virtually. What are the modifications for athletics in the upcoming year? We really don't have any answer to that right now. Um, our our own Lindsay Von Holtz, who is the, actually the president of the Board of Directors this year, which we're very proud of her for uh for stepping into that role at the Massachusetts uh Interscholastic Athletics Association. They have not released any guidance yet. They are, they are working very diligently though to uh to get there. Um, how will we do lunch safely? How will we do snacks safely? How will we do mask breaks, as Dr. Smith mentioned? Uh, how will we do those safely? Um, should we be looking back into tents again? You'll remember the tents at Lanesboro and at uh Williamstown. Um, and I think Joe already has that on his agenda for uh for early next week. What are some other precautionary practices that we should be engaging in? And what perhaps uh are some incentives that we should be working toward in order to get families to consider vaccination, in order to get families to consider being a part of the pool testing program? Or the or the safety check program, I should say. Um, yeah, I think one question that's on everybody's mind, could we be at a point where we are closing and going remote at any point this year? Uh, I would say legally, that's not an option that's open for us. Uh, ethically, gosh, we'll have to see what we will have to see what the data brings us. We will have to see how things look in Lanesboro uh and in Hancock and in New Ashford and in Williamstown. Uh, just looking at the at the most recent data release um that that came at five o'clock today, our numbers look really good. Um, you know, Berkshire County continues to see people get vaccinated. Uh, I assume that many of you like me see see more and more masks showing up at places like the grocery store or the drugstore places where you're not necessarily required to wear a mask but are doing so out of neighborliness. Um, and and so, you know, I I wish that we had more answers or as many answers as we have questions, but we simply don't at this point. But but one thing I know for certain is that, you know, one one of my mantras that I carry with me professionally and as a husband and as a father and as a a a a resident of Pittsfield, as a servant here in the communities of Lanesboro and Williamstown, uh this mantra follows me everywhere I go. How can I be a great neighbor to every single one of my neighbors? Um, not just the ones I know, not just the ones I like, not just the ones that I that I uh share political agreements with. Um, how do I be a great neighbor to all of my neighbors? Because that's really what this seems to be about. If if we can come together and we can uh put put the right amount of energy into taking care of ourselves and into taking care of each other, we are going to have a a safe, healthy, really positive, good experientially uh school year. And 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 we're gonna do that together. So that is the end of my presentation. I'm more than happy at this point to to take questions or comments from the committee. Ursula, I see a hand up on your screen.
Yeah, um, I had a question going back to the test and stay. Um, I think that's great, keeping kids in school instead of sending them home if they were masked and potentially, you know, near someone else. Um, so with that test that they have to take for five school days, is that something families are doing at home and like self-reporting? Or that's gonna happen when they walk into the school?
No, it's going to happen. It's going to happen when they walk into the school. Um, it's.
Or they go any further, they'll swab and.
Yeah, yeah. Or or we may have a room, the space that they report directly to with with no interaction to do that. And it's uh, yeah, I thank you for asking that question because I probably confused the the notion with but the, you know, I guess what I was saying about home is that the the test that we're using is the same test that you can go into Walgreens or CVS or or Rite Aid or whatever and buy. Um, we we have a. We, we have a kid sitting at home on top of our refrigerator. It's a, it's a swab. Now you don't have to go deep. Five circles around each nostril. There's a little card that comes with it. There's a dropper of uh, a chemical and within 15 minutes you have a. A uh, a reliable yes or no on are you COVID positive or not? That will be administered at the school.
Yeah, and I just want to reiterate because I have a, this past year I had a fourth grader and a fifth grader and they both were in the instance where someone in the class turned up positive. The whole class was sent out for a week and it was really frustrating because the state guidance didn't say that that had to happen. I know that was our policy.
Yep.
But it just felt like. We were using the testing as a way to have kids out of school and not in school. And I think this is great that we can, you know, if we can continue to test them and they're negative, then they should continue to be in school. So.
Agreed.
Awesome.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve?
Uh, yes, thank you. So I just want to say first, uh, thank you to you, your staff, the teachers, everyone who is. I, I guess the best way to phrase this is a line from Larry Niven, juggling, you know, priceless balls and variable gravity. Where you just have no idea what's going to happen. Six hours later. And you know, it, it is an incredibly difficult task. One of the things you said a few times, which you really resonated with me, and it's something that I think we have to do more as a district is talking about data. Is making sure that our decisions are based on data and based on studies. Uh, sometimes you, we, we will have to act before all the facts are in. And you, last year when things were happening so quickly. We did many things which in the end turned out not to be that effective. And one of the things that I think is essential for us to keep in mind as we go forward is to actually look at the policies. You know, to constantly keep looking at them and see, is this actually effective in making the school district safer? Or is it something that just makes it look like we are making the school district safer? And it's not always going to be easy to tell the difference between the two. Uh, one of the things that I have found a little bit disappointing in going to some of the places like CDC. And others is that they're not really showing the studies behind their recommendations. They're saying the recommendations, but they're not showing the studies. And so right now I'm actually researching with a couple of colleagues, uh, because you can, I don't know what the right answer is. Uh, but I'm trying to get a sense of how effective are the masks if you have vaccinated students? Is it really providing additional protection? Because there are issues with lung. There have been studies about decreases in lung and there's been studies about the carbon dioxide that the kids are breathing in. And so it's, uh, we, we had this many months ago. It's balancing all the different risks and rewards and trying to figure out what is the right. Your path forward. Yeah, more kids die from drowning than from COVID. You don't have a response of shutting down swimming pools. We need to figure out what is the right way going forward. And so what I would love to see, and it doesn't have to be in this meeting. But I would love to see some studies and I'm happy to help try to find them that actually show that the policies we're choosing are actually beneficial. That they actually have a quantifiable known benefit to the community to balance out the cost that we have for the students. Uh, could you say something about how many minutes of mask breaks students have during the day?
Yeah, I believe last year, Steve, when, when mask breaks were there, uh, I, I don't know. I believe it was around. You know, at the elementary schools, it was, it was the, the extra 15 minute recess were utilized as outdoor um, mask breaks. Um, certainly, you know, we're really leaving it to individual classroom teachers to schedule those. And certainly if a student says, you know, look, I'd need this. Uh, my, my experience here thus far has been we have folks that are very sensitive to um. The fact that students do need this. When kids are eating will be sort of an organic and natural uh. Uh, mask break. And then also, you know, we're working around how to do snacks because there, there's, we would, we would like to include snacks. We know it's a long day. Uh, you know, whether you're a teenager, whether you're, you're a, you know, an elementary school student. So I, I don't know that I can quantify that, that we're going to guarantee a number of minutes every person. For a mask break, but um, we, we are certainly w- working to make sure we do have some, some regularly scheduled mask breaks. And then knowing that our staff will be sensitive to the needs of their children.
The reason I was saying this is I would like to actually just. Do you a week trying to put myself in the view of students? And you mask myself just as they do as a professor. I'm lucky. I can go to my office. I can take off my mask then. I have a half hour break between classes. I think it would be very valuable for us in the school committee. To, you know, follow the masking policies ourselves for a week and just get a sense of, you know, what is this actually like? And you, again, I, I don't envy the decision that has to be made in terms of the trade-off. We've got. A place with hopefully a high vaccination rate at Mount Greylock. Your COVID cases, you are low among our students. It doesn't affect the students as much. Test positivity, I think is low in the student community. And again, it's just. These are things I think that we should be considering going forward in terms of. What policies we institute. And so I would be again, happy to help work on assembling the data for something like this.
Thank you, Steve.
Yep.
Curtis?
Uh, first of all, I want to say hi, Julia. And uh, thank you for the presentation Jake and to the principals as well. Um, a couple of things I want to talk about in terms of the, the data and I really appreciate uh, Stephen's. Data-driven approach. We're both math guys, so that's. Natural for us to both think that way. Um, when we talk about the local numbers being good, they are good. Massachusetts. Is the second most vaccinated state in the country to Vermont, uh, at last I checked. Uh, but Berkshire County is the second least vaccinated county in the state. Um, we are below 50% full vaccination. The last I checked around 48, I think it was. Um, and our numbers are good, but when, when you look at the last four weeks, they're moving in the absolute wrong direction. Uh, we went from having 5,640 tests over a two-week period, two weeks ago. To 6,582 in the most recent two weeks. Uh, and that's not that big of an alarming indicator, except that our positivity rate went from 0.87% to 2.10%. If you have a higher positivity rate when you're doing more testing, that's actually a, a larger increase in positives than it looks like. Uh, our numbers are still low. Uh, we are definitely doing better north of the, what my mother lovingly referred to as the Manson Nixon line. Um, but uh, our, our, our little bubble in New England, when you look at a national map is crystal clear. Uh, it's a different color than the rest of the country pretty much. Um, and to have the population densities we have in our cities, that is a credit to the vaccination rate uh, in our states. Um, which are again amongst the highest in the country. Um. I do take issue, uh, I, I don't, I, I, I don't imagine any of us talk about uh, the deaths of children lightly. Um, uh, or, or think of it lightly, but I do take issue with the comparison. Uh, uh, Stephen, that you made of COVID deaths to drowning deaths because drowning isn't contagious. Um, also the number of children who died from COVID, that was with us shutting down schools for uh. The better part of a year and uh, shutting down a lot of society for part of that as well. Uh, without those mitigating factors and the use of masks, I don't know that the numbers would be the same, but that's hypothetical conjecture. I can look at specific data specifically relating to the Delta variant in the South. Where we have nine states who have all of their hospitals now at or near capacity or overwhelmed. We have two states. Who are building emergency hospitals in parking garages, including one that is almost exclusively being used as a pediatric unit. Because we have more children dying of COVID now than at any point in this pandemic. We have more children testing positive. Positive at this point, uh, than at any point during this pandemic. And again, our numbers locally are low, but they are not trending in the right direction right now and. Hospitalizations and deaths are a lagging indicator. Uh, so this is something that we really do need to be mindful of. So I think looking at it from a data-driven. Point of view is an absolutely valuable thing to do. Uh, and in, in, in terms of the impact of wearing masks on our students, that's definitely something to consider. Uh, I'm back in my school building already. We have students reporting Monday, August 23rd. Uh, so I'm in the building with the rest of our faculty fully masked uh, all day, except when we go outside. Uh, regardless of our vaccination status. I think it's important that everyone be masked regardless of our, our vaccination status. Uh, I'm glad that we're going to continue with the pool testing. I forget what the new buzzword is already, but I don't have it on my screen. Um, I think it's a very valuable tool in uh, containing and documenting spread. Uh, and it's incredibly crucial for contact tracing components as well. Um, I do have some data from the rapid tests that are being used to detect COVID. We're seeing an increase in rapid tests producing false negatives in vaccinated people. Because the viral load in the vaccinated people is lower than what the rapid tests are designed to detect. So we have people who are getting negative tests, but are symptomatic. So then they go into a doctor and take an actual PCR test. And find out that they are in fact positive. But since they're vaccinated predominantly, they're not hospitalized. And they're certainly the minority amongst deaths being less than 1% of all COVID fatalities in the country. Um, I, I do have a question coming out of this outpouring of data, which is what is our timeline in terms of firming up and making concrete? The details, the lunches, the distancing at lunches, the, those things. Uh, those to me are, are crucial details. Uh, the, the plan we have in place, there's no, there's no bulletproof foolproof plan. But it's the difference between what's, what's, what's a glass door and what's a screen door. Uh, and I know we want to be closer to glass.
Sure. We, we, we're thinking we have about two weeks to get everything as, as etched in stone as we can. And knowing that we, we have to be perfectly open. We don't start as early as you start. Um, but uh, you know, we are. We are, now that everybody's back as of August 1, we've really been hitting this hard about what exactly is this going to look like? So we, we will likely be communicating with parents almost weekly. Uh, around here's where we are now. Um, and, and you know, including things like. Can kids check books out of the library this year? Um, you know, can we have visitors in the school building this year or not? The answer to that's going to be no. Um, I think the answer to the library book question is likely to be yes. Uh, but, but these are all things that we're kind of gathering, putting our heads together, getting some expert help with. And uh, and we'll be rolling all of that out uh, within the next couple of weeks, Curtis. And Ursula, your hand was up and then Steve, your hand was up.
So I just, I, I was going to say a lot of what um, Curtis did in that, you know, I think I haven't. I don't read the numbers every day, but I know that they're going in the wrong direction and it's scary. And it seems like with the Delta variant. Even vaccinated folks can be spreading this. Um, which is scary. I think, you know, I'm vaccinated, but my kids aren't, and that makes me worry. And I think that anything we can do to keep the kids safer in school and keep them in school. Is what we need to do. And if that means masks. It doesn't really seem like the kids cared all that much. I mean, most of them didn't complain at all, you know? Um, most of them, at least at the elementary schools are certainly unvaccinated, right? They're not, most of them aren't old enough to be vaccinated. So. I think having an overall mandate is the way to go. Um, I'd just like to add, I, I work at General Dynamics and uh, we're back to a 100% mask mandate, vaccinated or not. And that's not a GD policy, that's a Navy policy. Uh, they own our facility and they have mandated masks, no matter who you are or whether you've had a shot or not. So. I do think it's about, like you said, taking care of your neighbor. It's our sense of responsibility to our community and. That's one very minor thing that we can do that will help keep these kids in school. I mean. I know folks that were down in the Carolinas and last year their positivity rates were like 25%. I mean, it was obscene, but the kids were in school when we were out and they were masked. And they were healthy, you know, and I, I think there's something to be said for that. And the masks clearly help. Um. And I just, I can't voice my opinion enough that we should all be wearing masks in the schools until we get through this. So.
Thanks, sir. Thanks, Ursula. Steve?
Sorry, um, yes, I just wanted to just briefly respond and you, again. I'm not saying I'm against masks. I'm not saying I'm for masks. What I'm saying is I want to make sure that we're data-driven. That we are able to show the community, here's what the facts are. I mentioned the drowning just to put things into context because we often have trouble visualizing and understanding. You, certain probabilities and it sometimes helps to put various events in context. We initially were allowing gators for students to wear uh, as a mask many, many months ago. And then we quickly realized that the gators do not provide significant uh, protection against COVID because of the size of the molecule. And so I think it's extremely important that when we look at this, we keep track of other. While the procedures we're putting in place, doing what we want them to do. And that's the issue I'm really trying to raise right now. Uh, there are some studies I'm seeing that are saying that the vaccine may not be effective after six months. And again, I, I haven't really seen enough data on that yet, but if the effectiveness of the vaccine is. Decreased significantly after six months without a boost, you, this is something we need to definitely be aware of. And I'm just saying that going forward, as we have these conversations as many times as possible. If we can point to, or hear the studies, here are the reasons why we're doing this. Something.
Thanks, Steve. So. Not seeing any other hands, I would say just in, in terms of the policy and all of you in your school committee packets have um. The MASC newsletter that sort of outlines, the MASC is the Massachusetts Association of School Committees for folks who, who don't know that. Um, they, there, there's their newsletter where their policy, their new, their updated policy is outlined. And then there's a copy of that. And then there's a copy of our policy as it stands now and a policy of some tweaks. That, that we will need to catch up with relative to our policy. Our current policy does give the superintendent the authority. To um, to dump in and, and make a change as, as the situation on the ground warrants it. So just so you're aware, some of the, the tweaks to our current policy that, that we need to enact at some point. For now, we are suggesting masks are a must while inside. They are not a must while outside or on school grounds. Uh, that's one place that our policy, um. It, it actually reads that both indoors and on grounds, individuals must be masked. And that's, that's where we're saying within the school building. Um, there's, there's another piece of the policy later on that says. Um, refusal to wear a mask may result in removal from school and um, and. In per, you know, an alternative to in-person education will be in place. Just please be aware that alternative to in-person education at this point is that we will send your work home. Or you will get student work via Canvas. Um, not that we're anticipating that we're going to, to need to do that or would necessarily do that if we had a. A refusal to wear a mask. Uh, but just wanted to make that clear around that, that this does live in policy. We do need to make some tweaks to the policy, but for now, making these recommendations, asking for your support. Of these recommendations, because I think it's important for the public to, to know that the public we are all here to serve. And uh, we will have the policy work catch up. And Ursula, I think you're, you're hand up. Thanks.
Oh, yes. Um, I just wanted to um. Re- respond to Steve's comment. I, I'm all for data and making decisions based on data, but I also think that we need to understand that this is science, right? And that it's, to some extent, it's kind of experimental. We figure out what's right and what's wrong. And a year ago. Maybe a year and a half ago, we were all, you know, like selling off groceries till we figured out that that didn't matter. And then we thought six feet and then we realized it was three feet and. Things change, right? So right now masks are the best thing to do. I, I think in my expert opinion. Um, and if we were to put that policy in place and find out later that masks are bad or masks don't help or whatever, then we can make a change. But I think that we need to, we need to make the right decision and, and then. Sometimes follow it up with data, right? Because we can't wait until we have all the data that we want that shows what we want necessarily. Um, sorry, I'm rambling. Nevermind.
Not, not rambling at all, Ursula.
We need to just, you know, we do need to do what's right and, and, and hope that it continues to be the right thing. And if it's not, we'll change course, right? Because we continue to learn, unfortunately.
Thank you. Carrie, was your hand up? Okay, uh, Steve, your hands up?
I forgot I was muted. Uh, I, I basically agree with what you said. We need to constantly be checking what we're doing and making sure that it really is doing what we hope it is doing. You know, we found out that, you know. All the deep cleaning we were doing was not having the level of effect we thought it was going to be. We found out that the gators were not having the effect we thought it was going to be. You know, I'm just saying, we we it would be wonderful if we lived in a world with complete information with, you know, just and here is the one logical choice of what to do. And at times, you know, it has to be, given the information we have, this is the choice we think is going to be best for our district, given what we know at this time. What I'm saying is as much as possible, I would like us to try to gather data to help us guide these decisions. And I would like us to constantly be looking at some of the decisions we've made as new data comes to light and just think, is this doing what we hoped it was doing?
Yeah, and I I would add it, you know, at this point, that one of the things that I have really valued over over the past year is the Joint Labor Management Council with our with our union colleagues. And that really the sort of the heart of those gatherings that we did weekly last year and I anticipate we'll be doing at least weekly in the upcoming year is is looking at data that is out there. You know, I I will acknowledge that that I I'm kind of with Ursula in that it it's not always, it's not always, I I'll just be very, very crystal clear. And if you want to fire me, you certainly can. You know, so some of the actual, I spent three hours down a rabbit hole of of some some studies that I was directed to from an article from from Harvard Medical School around the the value, the relative value of masking. I will tell you, it's like when I read publications that my brother, who's a geneticist publishes. I'm very proud of him and I love seeing his name in print when he sends it my way. I don't understand a word that he is saying, you know, other than things like the and the word and and things like that. So so there is, there is a notion for those of us that are not trained scientists. We're intelligent, we're educated and we can muddle our way through. There also is a necessary dependence on expertise. And some of that dependence on expertise is really about wisdom and discernment to to opt which which experts to follow. I I think in this particular case, our governor, whom I respect very much, the work he does and the person that he is, is suggesting that the experts that advise him say masks are not necessary in school if you're vaccinated. As a as a leader, you know, putting aside what's popular, what's not popular, you know, but 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 always keeping in mind that unlike any other activity that a child engages in, a child is legally required to engage in the activity that we run for 180 days. No child is mandated to go swimming, no child is mandated to ride a go-kart, no child is legally mandated by law to anything other than go to school. And that child's parents, guardians and caretakers are likewise mandated. And they actually have threat of punishment hanging over them for not following the mandate. So so school is not voluntary, it's not optional. You can homeschool, I suppose, if your lifestyle allows for that. Or you can go to an independent school if your lifestyle allows for that. But but our kids have to be here. We've chosen a path to follow expert recommendations that suggest mask help. I I described it to a to a parent I was speaking with today as a really, it's a low investment. It's a it's a low investment, high return strategy. It's it's my observation of children last year is that there was really quickly, there was not kids were not messing with their masks, they were not complaining about their masks. They very quickly grew used to the masks. And I actually admired the way some students use the masks as a tool for self-expression to to share a little bit of who they who they actually are and what they actually value with the rest of the world. So I it it doesn't seem like that great of an ask for what it seems like the the there there's widespread agreement that the the return on that investment is, which is that we can keep kids in school in person for 180 days. So I I am totally with you on data that is circling back to where I started. That is really where one of the primary purposes of the JLMC, which which last year and this year again, will be informed by a couple of medical doctors from the community. So so we really can get the best handle we can get on on what we're doing and why and how we do it best. Curtis, see a hand up and then Carrie and then Julia.
You may have just answered this while I was struggling to remember how to raise my hand in a classroom. As a teacher, I never have to do that. Um, that not not on Zoom anyway. Um, will the JLMC be meeting this school year? I know we can't make official recommendations as a body in that regard, but will we still meet to go over data and look at that picture? And you may have just
We we have not, that that's part of our negotiations with with the union around asking all adults, even those vaccinated to mask. I I think regardless of the outcome of those negotiations, and there are really more conversations than they are negotiations. That that is something that 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 both parties in the conversation would very much like to see and that we would fully endorse. So the answer to that is yes. Yeah, and Carrie and then Julia and then Steve. Curtis, if you were done, I didn't mean to cut you off. Okay.
I was just gonna move to support the continuation of the face covering. Sorry, I'm doing this because I have like mosquitoes. Support the continuation of the face covering policy and yeah, I'll leave it at that. That's my motion.
I have a motion from Carrie. Do I have a second?
A second.
Ursula, a second. Discussion, the one thing I wonder if we should add to the motion is just the piece about the staff requirement pending on the legally required completion of the negotiations with the union on the topic of everyone masking.
That that seems like a good idea, Christina. You know, I I don't, I did not want to give anybody the impression. We've been in communication with our union colleagues all summer long and and many days pretty constant communication. And and so I almost hesitate to call this a negotiation. It really is just a communication of of largely like-minded people who are absolutely committed to safety and absolutely committed to being in school in person, working together to figure out how we how we do it in in ways that work for everybody. So I I think it would be good to to attach that to the motion.
What was the wording that you used, Christina?
Um, with this, so motion to support the superintendent in implementation of a mask requirement for all students and staff in line with the policy we have in place, with the staff requirement pending the required completion of negoti- negotiations with the union on the topic of masking.
So that that's actually, sorry, it's not the motion that I made. I just made a motion to support the continuation of the face covering policy. So do you want me to withdraw the motion? And
I think it's I mean, it seems the same, just worded differently. I don't know. It's up to you.
I I think your, Carrie's notion that you're supporting the recommendation I am making, which is for everybody to wear a mask. I do think it's different, different ways of saying the same thing. In essence.
I guess my my problem with the modification is that it's, as Jake said, it's not really a negotiation. So we probably shouldn't say subject to negotiation and
Well, Carrie, I don't, I don't mean to interrupt you, I'm very sorry, but I I do want to be clear. You know, Jo- Joe's giving me the look that tells me I'm I'm being a bit Pollyannaish here. There there is a legal requirement to formally negotiate this because it is a change in working conditions. Last year, when people were mandated to wear masks, it was because there was a a state regulation that decreed it was so. In absence of that decree, there is a legal obligation to negotiate this and come to a conclusion by a negotiations. So I I apologize for interrupting you, but I I don't want to let my my good naturedness and optimism cloud the fact that 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 this is, this is technically and legally a negotiation with our union colleagues.
I'm gonna withdraw the motion because it's it seems irrelevant if we can't. You're mid-process and this motion is to support a policy which you can't enforce with adults right now. So I'm a little confused about that. So I'm gonna withdraw the motion. Julia, do you support that? Drawing the motion?
It was Ursula who seconded.
I think it was Julia.
We both said it, but that's fine.
Okay.
I would, I would caution us against, we do have the legal right to mandate this for students. And I think it's important we have that, some record that there is support of that, if there is support of that. And I and I don't know that supporting the recommendations when we're mid-process, I think we're further than mid-process. We're 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 in the process. I I don't know that supporting the process, even though the process isn't finished, is is a is a is a bad thing or a wrong thing.
Okay, and Christina's amendment would seem accurate. So I'll I'll maintain the motion, I didn't, the withdrawal wasn't seconded, so the motion still stands. I accept Christina's amendment. Whoever officially seconded it now needs to accept Christina's amendment.
Okay, any further discussion?
I think Julia had her hand up and then Steve had his hand up.
I I had something quite erudite to say and it is now out of my mind. But I but I I do want to, I I certainly want to echo, as you'll see in my vote, the thoughts of all of our colleagues. I care deeply about the data, but also regard like where we are right now tells me this is what we need to be doing. So I I wanted to say that and yes. Sorry.
I'm sorry. Steve?
Yes, I just wanted to say, discussion, negotiation, whatever you want to call, I think it is absolutely wonderful that we're having these conversations. And I think this has been one of the best things to come out of the pandemic, is having the three groups working together, sitting together. This is precisely what we want. This is one of the things that many people have been working towards for years. And this is an absolute wonderful thing to continue. The other thing I want to ask is, has the Board of Health provided there? Because I defer immediately to anyone from the Board of Health on stuff like this.
Yeah, we, I I believe that the the health inspector received this communication that we sent to parents as a parent potentially. We have not forwarded this to the Board of Health, Steve, but I will take care of that before this week is over.
Right, because what what I'm saying is when we have discussions like this, it would be very helpful for me if we hear that the Board of Health has, you've supported something like this and just to get their input on issues like this. You possibly even invite them to a school committee meeting here, because this is one of the chances we have to pass information on to the public. And so it would be a wonderful opportunity. The other thing I just wanted to say is
I think we lost you, Steve.
I had, I had a, I I probably shouldn't have. I I had a slight medical issue and so I really should not be voting tonight and so I'm going to just be abstaining on all votes from this point on, on all issues.
Thanks, Steve. Hope you're okay, hope you're well.
I I am, but I just want to
Understood. Yep. I said, Ursula, your hand was up and Julia was your hand up too, now, okay.
The point of clarification, I understand the issue with the union and the negotiation. Can we mandate it for all students and all adults in the building who are not union personnel? I mean, is that the way it's written and then just teachers are subject to, or I guess anyone who's part of the union are subject to negotiations?
Yeah, I I I, we certainly could. I I think at this point, supporting the the entire recommendation as it stands, you know, I I sent something out on I don't know if it was Monday or Tuesday, but it said, look, at this point, asking everybody that works here in the summer, which are all non-union folks. You know, please, please wear a mask when you're indoors. And I think we have 100% folks wearing masks. And 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 we actually had a few people wearing masks indoors well before that. I, I, yeah, I am sorry that, as you've experienced before, sometimes my my looseness with with how I approach these things creates challenges at this level where we're doing very formal things. But I I I I am confident that when we start school, we will have agreement among all parties that that are on the payroll for the school district, that it's the right thing to do to wear masks as as adults. So I I really think sticking with sort of, you know, Carrie's original notion, Christina's clarifying it a little further that that you're you're accepting the recommendation and we are going to continue to work diligently to get to full recognition of the recommendation, if that makes sense. Steve, is your hand up again?
Oh, no, sorry, I was about to take it down.
Okay, that's what I I was trying to remember in my head if I saw it come down that time, so thank you.
I I unfortunately need to leave the meeting.
Take care, please.
Julia, did you have a question? I saw your hand go up and then go down again.
It it was really brief, but but one of my hearing, we need to, I I just want to name that I know that we get a lot of guidance from DUCY and from the State Department of Health and from our local doctors and who are who participate in the guidance on the JLMC. And and I and I I just want to caution us against adding layers and layers of all the different people. Because we, and and I guess reiterate what Dr. McCandless has already said about using discernment around where he needs to rely on getting his information. And I I just worry, I was hearing more and more, you know, get this to the Board of Health, get this. And I thought, let's, you know, we're getting a lot of guidance. And I want to make sure, Dr. McCandless, that you understand that, at least I want to make sure you have that. I I support you in in your discernment.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Bo and I.
Oh, Curtis, did you have a question?
I just wanted to clarify that Carrie had made the point that whoever had initially seconded her original motion, since she had accepted the amendment to that motion, the person who originally seconded needed to second the amended motion before we voted on it. I didn't
Or, yeah, Ursula did, her voice was really quiet.
Sorry.
It was Ursula. Okay. So I have Bo and I, Conry I.
Constancy I.
Elfin by I.
Green I.
Loy I.
Okay, so that motion passes. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everybody. That that was a helpful discussion, I'm very appreciative. Thanks, everybody. That was a helpful discussion. I'm very appreciative to everybody and to everybody that sent emails to both the school committee and to myself to help us, you know, come to a conclusion on what we really need to do this year. The next item on the agenda, I believe in my report, are we to the? I think we're, yeah, thank you. I wanted to make sure everybody was okay that A and B got kind of glommed together in that discussion. Curtis?
Just quickly, was Stephen our secretary, was he taking notes on this? And since he has had to tap out, is someone else taking?
Because this is a regular meeting, we have our district note taker in effect.
Perfect. Yeah, so the next item on the agenda, the discussion of a title change from Director of People Services to Director of Special Education. Nobody is living or dying by this change. Patrick's on the meeting and then I don't think Patrick is is going to be devastated either way this goes and neither am I. I just thought that, you know, before we bring you his contract in the September meeting for approval, that this was kind of an organic opportunity to consider really calling this position what it is in our current organizational structure. I think in organizational structures passed, under leaders passed in this district, the Director of People Services was a very, very appropriate title. In districts that tend to have that title, you have somebody that is, in essence, and legally by DUCY's standards, the Special Education Director. But they also tend to oversee 504 Services, which is part of the Individuals with Disabilities Act. They also are overseeing English Language Learners protocols and procedures and practices. They also tend to be overseeing our services to students that are without housing and our students that are finding themselves in a foster child situation. And then, you know, dealing with other things that pertain to nuances of students outside of regular K through 12 educational services. And I do think in the past, there was an individual with this title that did all of those things and probably 20 things more. Right now, we have kind of, you know, a combination of need, necessity. Dr. Putnam, my immediate predecessor, did a bit of this. We have been endeavoring to do a little bit more. Things like 504 Services now reside in the schools with assistance from several of us here at the central office. ELL Services, I really work directly with our ELL instructor, who is also our ELL coordinator. Stacy and I work to support her and her work and to make sure she has everything she needs to make sure we're okay with state reporting. Our children who are without housing are, that goes through the person that handles our reporting for that is Principal Schutz from over at Mount Greylock. Our foster child liaison and the person that interacts with DCF around that work and other support agencies is Colin Shebar, who is the Assistant Principal over at the high school. So we really, I think it's important to call Patrick's position what it is. And as special education students, students with learning disabilities, they constitute like 17, 18% of our entire student body. I think it's good optically, it's the truth. And I think it's appropriate to have Patrick's title be Director of Special Education. I think it's important that the families that we serve through our special education program understand that we have one individual at the central office level who is focused entirely on the needs of their children, the needs of their children's instructors and paraprofessionals, and on the needs of their child's program. Because we are talking about almost 20% of our entire student population. So I don't think that, this doesn't change Patrick's work in any substantive way. His focus is already there and has been there. But I think it just puts us in a position of calling a position much, much more closely to what it actually is. And may help avoid confusion for families that are new to the communities, new to the district, or new to special education program. They don't have to cipher out that the Director of People Services is the Special Ed Director. I think this just brings clarity to our entire program. So that's my elevator sales pitch to you for this. And, but like I said, it's not, it's not a serious significant matter, it's kind of semantics. But I do think, and I think Patrick would agree, that it's a kind of an important piece of semantics.
I'm happy to make a motion. I would like to make a motion to change the title of Director of People Services to Director of Special Education. And Julia has seconded. Any further discussion? Carrie?
So I wonder if it should be Special Education Services as opposed to just special education? I'm not sure. Go ahead.
No, I'm just thinking aloud. Please, you go ahead. Sorry for interrupting.
I think it's less, and maybe I'm wrong about this. I'm thinking, hoping it's less likely to be abbreviated, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Special Education Services. I don't know if it's just adding, yeah, if it's just adding words for no reason. I don't, I don't support that, but I believe my understanding was, and I'm thinking back to when we first made the title change away from Special Education to Director of People Personnel Services, there was some sense that the abbreviation of Special Education Services was not something that was appreciated. So we were relieved to get away from it. I'm a little worried about going back to it.
I can tell you, and again, I'll probably reveal a little bit more than you want. I am really an anti-fan of that abbreviation. And I've made that known amongst our administrative team. And it's years of habit, it's years of, you know, really questionable habit. So no matter what the title of this is, we are now going to go back to having an SBED director. You know, I happen to like that, you know, it is the Director of the Services that are delivered to those children. I kind of like that change because that is maybe even a little more closer to the to the truth of what the position does. But I also would say, and this wasn't like a public thing, but I have been on a campaign to get us out of the habit. And I do it occasionally myself because it is, for some of us, 20 or 30 years of habit of hearing that, seeing that, that we are not using that abbreviation anymore. And I love that reasoning and I appreciate the history lesson. But I also kind of like the adding services at the end of it too. Because, you know, it's really important that we don't allow kids who are on IEPs to internalize that they're a special education student. They are a student that receives services that allows them to be learning on a more, with a level of support that allows them to fully, more fully participate in what we're doing. Not liking kids sort of adapting or adopting and internalizing titles about themselves. So that services, I think, is a really good addition for a number of reasons, Carrie.
I'm happy to accept that amendment.
As am I.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Bo and I.
Conry I.
Constancy nine.
Elfin by nine.
Green I.
Great, that motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. New business cards, Patrick.
Okay, I think that concludes your section, right, Jake?
It does, it does.
Next up on the agenda is the Finance Subcommittee Report. And I will turn it over to Carrie Green.
Thanks, Christina. So we had a Finance Subcommittee meeting this afternoon. Steve was able to attend for the latter part of it. And Jake was there as well as, sorry, Jake McCandless was there, Joe, of course, and Ursula. Most of the meeting, we talked about the Williams Capital Gift. So I want to spend a little time with the committee talking about that. But Joe, is there anything that you wanted to cover before we launch into that, or Ursula?
No.
Okay. So just to refresh your memories, last November, we voted as a committee, or maybe it was October, actually, last fall, we voted as a committee to move forward with the Williams Capital Gift expenditures on a synthetic turf field and with a track being an ad alternate to put that out into design documents. The design documents were put out to bid, the bids came in higher than we had hoped. The committee decided to change course a little bit and approved expenditures for ADA compliance Title IX and some safety issues. That work is now being done. And we should know, actually, Joe probably has those figures handy, what we're spending on that project. The committee also voted at the time to set aside a million dollars from the capital gift for future expenditures. We agreed as a committee to revisit this. When the gift had a chance to recuperate, none of us knew what was going to happen with COVID, with the market. The Williams gift is invested with the Williams Endowment, which has done very well during the COVID pandemic, as has almost everything invested in the market. That said, we'll know what is available to us in October from the Williams gift. We'll be able to provide the committee with the expenditures that have been made from the Title IX ADA Compliance and Safety. And we'll be able to make some decisions about how to move forward with that funding. We don't have a lot of time, right, between now and, let's say, October, when the capital gift balances is communicated to us. And we also don't have a lot of time and energy to devote to this as a committee, as an administration, as a community. We're coming out of COVID, we're going into COVID. We have educational, I mean, everything we do is about education, right? So this is also about education. So I'm not going to say that this is, you know, outside of the scope. It's very much within the scope of what we do. Because we're talking about athletics and co-curriculars. We're also talking about, you know, the potential ability to teach outside in ways that we cannot currently do. So there are all sorts of reasons to prioritize this. I'm simply saying it cannot overtake the other things that we're working on right now. So what we talked about in the Finance Subcommittee this afternoon and what I had talked about with Christina and Joe and Jake earlier was to focus in on some questions that rose to the top in the course of the community discussions and the course of our meetings and the public forum. And to bring those questions to the committee and see if they were the right questions. Meaning, these are the questions that perhaps we hadn't given complete answers to, or community members felt that we hadn't fully responded to. Some of them are questions that we were still asking ourselves. So what I'd like to do tonight is to share those questions with you and to ask you as a committee, is there anything we're missing? Is there anything that we should revise, adjust, edit? And then we'll spend a little time researching the answers. What do we know? What answers do we have available to us? What else do we need to figure out? And by we, I kind of mean the administration. So I want to be mindful that this list really can't grow very long. Because we, you know, we need to contain the conversations to the highest priority, I would say, what we need in order for us to feel that we can make a decision about how and whether to move forward in October. So when I say how and whether to move forward, I mean, are we going to take the documents that we have, which include the scope and bidding documents for synthetic turf field and for a track? And put those back out on the street with some refinement, right? We need to make some adjustments, we need to make some revisions, we need to subtract out the work that's being done now. That's the decision that we need to make in October. And then, of course, there are many subsequent decisions to make. If we put those out, right, then we need to also then approve bids. So the decision is not to spend money. The decision is to get the information that we need in order to know what we're going to be spending if we choose to move forward. Sorry if that was confusing. We can go back and review that again in terms of process. But really, our goal is to, in October, be able to say, yes, we want to move forward, knowing that we have this X amount of dollars in this Williams Fund, aside from the 1 million that we've determined not to spend. Are we in a position to move forward with a turf and potentially also a track? So Christina, could I share my screen or whoever is the host?
Should be able to now.
Great. Okay. So these are the questions. They're grouped into financial, environmental and health and programmatic. Financial renewal costs. So this came up quite a bit, right? So this idea that we would spend money from the capital gift, but then the renewal in 10 or 12 years of a synthetic turf field would fall to the towns. Is there a way that we can cover those costs within the district, right? Or more specifically, within the capital gift? So that raises the question, do the funds remaining go to renewal? So the funds remaining, meaning the million dollars that we set aside and agree not to spend, assuming we stick to that, right? Can that million dollars be earmarked in part for renewal of a synthetic turf field and any repairs to the track that come due, you know, within a decade? Or should they be saved totally for building campus-related projects? Now, keeping in mind that it has to be specific to Mount Greylock, right? Not to the elementary schools. The other question that has come up, the pledge to keep the $1 million gift intact. Does that $1 million, is that? Is that $1 million as of the vote or is it as of the, the, this coming fall, or whenever we bid, like for instance? Going to throw numbers out there. If there's three and a half million dollars in the gift in the fall, in October, we've agreed not to spend a million, is that a million plus whatever that million has gained in interest at the time of the vote, or is it just a million in the fall? And then we have 2.5 to spend, you know, so that's, that's the question. And I think we, maybe some of us thought we were doing one thing and others thought we were doing another. So we just need to clarify that. Do we have plans for further defraying the maintenance and renewal costs through allowing use of the fields by groups outside of the school community? We didn't spend a lot of time talking about this at the time, but it was a question that came up. I don't know how much time we want to spend talking about this, but it's something that, that we could be thinking about, certainly at this point. Will we be able to afford a track? So the track was not as, as high a priority. And that's not to say that it wasn't considered important, but that the synthetic turf field was presented to us as something that would be used by more students for more, over the course of more time. That being said, the track supporters have become more vocal. And I think they've been there all along and perhaps felt that their voices were not being fully heard. And we are definitely hearing from people in the community who very much would support being able to install a real track. The track is also a potential draw for hosting tournaments and, and those kinds of things. So that's a question, will we have the money? We won't know that really until October, until we go and look at the, you know, the, the costs of, of those components. Can we have an objective comparison of natural and synthetic turf, turf costs and utility? This was raised pretty continuously as a question, why aren't we doing this? Have we made every effort to do this? Is this something that we want to spend money to do? Is this something that we feel is still important enough that we would hire a consultant or hire another firm to assess this? So that's the objective. That's why I think objective is in quotes there. And is it even possible to have an objective comparison of the two? Moving on to environment and health, at the end of the first field's useful life, can the end of life components be recycled? That would be the plastic component, the uppermost component of the, the grass, the plastic grass. We don't know that now, but what is the likelihood, right? How would the field itself impact the environment, the runoff, the chemicals, any other concerns? And are there student health concerns? So those are environment and health questions that may not have been fully addressed. And then programmatic, are there co-curricular needs of the school that have not adequately been investigated? Meaning, are these really still the priorities of the school from a programmatic perspective? So those are the questions that we are putting to the committee. Are these the questions that you would like finance committee members and administrators to put some time into? Are there questions that we've left out? Are there clarifications that you would like made? Is this a strategy that you support in terms of focusing in on a discrete number of questions, doing our due diligence around these and then bringing the committee to a decision? Julia.
Thank you. Let me just start there. Thank you very much. I really appreciate that it is appropriate for us to return to this. I also appreciate the desire to keep this contained and to recognize there are questions that felt unanswered, that, you know, caused a lot of community conversation. So I appreciate, you know, you generating this list. The one, and I, and I would also say, time has passed and science, you know, more studies have likely been done. Maybe not because of COVID, I don't know, but perhaps we have more data. And, and I, I also wonder how all that we've learned in COVID could influence our thought process around this. And in particular, is this question about the track? And I don't know, for me, the track is a question that would be categorized as, there's a programmatic question for me around which is the priority? And how do we determine which should the priority be? So it's not necessarily, will we be able to afford a track as well? But should we be rethinking, is this a tracker, is this, you know, if, if we can only have one, which is the right one? So just want to add that one in.
Thank you. Joe, did you want to respond to that or should we take Jose's question? Because I think Joe did have some conversations perhaps.
I did not have, I did not have conversations regarding track versus field and whether or not priorities have changed there. I have not heard about any administrative team member indicating that that is how they feel. But I have not had that explicit, if you had to choose between your two children, which child would you choose, kind of discussion? I'll just make that clear to.
Right, okay, thanks Jose.
Thanks Carrie, and I, I really appreciate, you know, the care that, you know, the, the finance subcommittee put into this, this list of questions and getting us to in an objective, careful way, get us to move forward on some outstanding issues, very, very, very big and important outstanding issues. Following up from what Julia had questioned, I think some, my initial reaction to the, the wording is that it seems to imply preference, preferences, just as Julia mentioned, track versus field. It seems to imply that, well, you know, we just added there. It also seems to have embedded within it a preference for artificial turf. And I'm not going to argue one way or the other, but and what I don't know is, is, and in my memory is failing me terribly. I don't know if we've committed ourselves yet in previous votes toward, forgive this phrasing, toward one track or the other. And so I guess I have a series of questions that I want to, wanted to ask in response to what you've shared with us, Carrie. The first one is most immediate, given the colleges changing protocols with regards to, to the pandemic. Do we know if the Mount Greylock Track and Field Team have a place to compete within this upcoming year? Has, has an agreement been made with the college to, to use the college track or are they effectively a homeless team?
Jose, I'll weigh in on that one. I, I don't know that an agreement has been executed. My, my experience as a superintendent in the Berkshires and certainly my experience in, in my, my time here is that the Williams College community will not leave our, our track athletes stranded. And that, that, you know, they were, they were not stranded this spring. You know, so I, so I don't, I don't know that it's a matter of, of we build a track or our students have nowhere to compete. I think it's more a matter of recognizing that that's a really important activity for a lot of students starting in seventh grade. And, and it's, it's, it's an activity that doesn't cut students, you know, there's, there's not a cut list posted that you made the team, you didn't make the team. It's, it's an activity that, that students, much of, of track and field are things that they can do when they're 20 years old and 30 years old and 40 years old and 50 years old, at least some way of it. It, it is a, a good pathway to lifelong fitness. So I, I don't think they're going to be without a, without a place to, to compete and to practice. I, I think it's really a matter of, of equity and and, and recognizing, you know, that, that all of these activities are important. And, and it would, you know, just like the, one of the beauties of an artificial surface field is in, in this summer and spring were a good example. An artificial surface field is not going to mind that we had the rainiest July in recorded history. It seems like, you know, it's playable no matter what, as long as the heat is not doing. You, you know, a, a track here on site would just allow our students to, to, you know, not have to travel to Williams College, which, which could become a burden for our students from Lanesboro. Quite frankly, it's, it's just a greater distance. And it would just be a way to showcase some, some magnificent performances from magnificent children right here on their school campus. So the, the answer to that is they will have a place to compete. I, I would be pretty comfortable in that.
Thanks Jake. And then this, this next one will be a shorter, but this is for, for you Carrie and for the, the finance subcommittee. The first list of questions that relate to finance seem both appropriate and, and, you know, hopefully straightforward, hopefully straightforward answers. The next two regarding environmental health and programming. I think, I think that's what point three is, programmatic. You know, the, the, that, that very important question there. What, how do you, what did you envision or how did you envision the finance subcommittee addressing those questions? Because it's not obvious to me, you know, how easy those answers can be, can, can be found. And whether the finance subcommittee is the most appropriate group to, to tackle those questions, very important questions.
So I'm going to skirt that for just a moment, Jose, and address your previous comment about this being seemingly more about synthetic turf. The reason for that is the committee did vote to proceed with synthetic turf last fall and it had voted to proceed with synthetic turf once before, but hadn't gotten as far along, I think, perhaps in that process. And so the study that we have, the detailed design documents that we have are for synthetic turf. And we all, we have an ad alternate that was done for track. There is some work that needs to be done to revise those documents. But that's what we have, that we could, we're in a position to move that forward. If we decide not to go that route, then we need to start over with the document phase. So then on the other question of the environment and health, I, I'm not sure. Joe, I don't know if you had thoughts about this?
Yeah.
In terms of, yeah, go ahead.
I, I think that for two A, the question is to try to make sure that with the available vendors for a field like that, that we either get a document indicating exactly how things are recycled and what that cost is and, and, you know, to a letter or, or we don't. If we can't get it, then we know that the answer to that question is that's a to be determined, which might not be the most satisfying answer, but at least we would then all know what that answer was. I, I feel like it was with the most recent set of documents, it was left out there as a, yeah, it won't be a problem. But that, that was not terribly reassuring for members of the committee or the public. For to B, this one is definitely just gather the latest research and put it in front of us. There is no, I, I think, again, it's a judgment call. Unfortunately, when this topic is brought up within pretty much every community where it's considered, you find hours of debate on the topic. I think the best we can possibly do is serve up the latest studies that we can find. Try to make sure that people have an equal opportunity to do that and at least inform themselves. And then for two C, it's the same thing as to B, you know, that, that there is no yes or no, I, I don't think.
Apologies Joe for interrupting. I, I, I think I can understand the, you know, various processes that we could implement to answer these questions. Who, who's doing the gathering? Who's gathering the, the data and information?
The most likely candidate to ask the questions and try to track down answers and bring them back is, it's either Jake or me, and I, and I have a feeling it would be a combination of both of us.
Thanks.
Julia.
I, this is somewhat a follow on to Jose's question. I, I'm now maybe a little bit confused. I appreciate that we were thinking, well, we've approved, we have the documents to, for the turf field. So these questions are to help us move forward on the turf field, but these questions are asking to try to clarify what we have as known knowns and known unknowns, which could lead us to say, we don't want a turf field, a synthetic turf, sorry.
We're, sorry, we're under no obligation to proceed with a turf field, right? Votes, votes were taken. I, I was just indicating to Jose, this is why we, we have the documents we have is because there have been votes to proceed.
Got it.
So we have certain documents that give us, you know, estimated prices and those kinds of, those are the things that if we vote to proceed with a synthetic turf field and a track would be my, you know, if we were to do that, then we have the documents that just need to be revised. If we vote to proceed with something else altogether, then we have to start over with design documents.
Okay, so.
Okay.
I, I think so, yeah. The, to his second, to Jose's second question of who is doing this work or who is calling and getting answers, I, I think it would, I, I, I imagine we all would like to avoid the conversations, you know, in the, the community and the tension that was created before. I think it would behoove us to engage with people who have, and maybe Joe, this is part of your process, but to engage with people who have strong beliefs about where the data is, who have strong beliefs about, you know, what, like who, who helped frame these questions for us earlier? So that if they have, you know, we can try as best as possible to define the goalposts in advance of looking for the information, if that makes sense. I mean, I think one of the concerns in the debate, the last time was it felt, some people felt as though the goalposts were moving. And I think we would want to make sure we're to, you know, defining where those goalposts are with the right people as much as possible in advance and then find the information. Does that, does that make sense?
So that, yeah, that makes sense. And also, you know, we have a lot of the information that was shared with us previously. I think what, what makes the most sense is if folks have new information. I mean, you mentioned that there's new data, Joe talked, you know, there, there may be new studies, there may be, you know, new resources available to us that could address some of these questions directly. If folks know about those, to reach out to the district, meaning, you know, our normal channels, which would be the superintendent and the chair of the school committee, right? To reach out with that kind of information that could be helpful in pointing us in the direction. To reach out with, um, that kind of information that could be helpful in pointing us in the direction for, for doing the research that's needed.
And, and I.
Makes sense?
It, it does, but I guess I might argue that, um, it, I would anticipate there are many people who aren't listening tonight or won't know to reach out. Um, and I, I think proactive outreach may be really important. I think, you know, with your, for example, the question, um, can we have an objective comparison of natural and synthetic turf costs and utility? Um, I think in advancing, what does that objective comparison look like? What does it, agreeing on what is included in that objective comparison? To make sure that we're gathering the right information or the most recent search, you know, research and focusing our efforts in that way, so that, um, people have agreed in advance, what might an objective comparison look like? And so that doesn't become the conversation at a later point.
Great. Thank you. Are there other thoughts? Okay. So I'm going to stop sharing this.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. No, that's okay. Go ahead, Jose.
I didn't know whether to raise my real hand or virtual hand to see that.
I couldn't see you with it, with the screen sharing.
Everything was slow. Uh, just, just to go back, Carrie, to, uh, how you envisioned or how, you know, a, a way this process could play out. So, um, the finance subcommittee could, could gather answers for those first set of questions. You know, some combination of Joe and Jake can, can start co-litting answers to the, the second set of, of questions. We find out then in October, how much we have left. Could you envision us then, what, what would be the, the next step? So imagine, you know, the, the what's left amount is fairly considerable, uh, and, and, and it's at least logistically possible to move forward. What, what, what do you, what do you see in terms of a timeline between now and, you know, the end of the year? Uh, what are the series of, of decisions that, um, or, or steps that would need to be that, that you envision happening?
So I can muddle through this, but Joe, you could probably do it much more gracefully.
The series of, so part of this is backing into a timeline and part of it is trying to just move something forward. If, if we back into a timeline, if the committee's wish was to have a construction project next summer for some set of features, fields, tracks, whatever it is. Um, I don't mean to make everything plural, but, um, what you would want to do is you would want to put documents out to bid in December or January or at the latest February. That is ideal. That avoids time crunches for contractors. It avoids you being an afterthought within a bid cycle and so on. What that also does is given the fact that we, we are doing a project that we're currently doing, it means that a contractor could potentially start to do the parts of the project in April or May that don't impact the fields that are in use in the spring. So if there was a new game field going back on the backside of campus, they could potentially start in on that portion of the project early enough to get them well clear of finishing in late August and impacting or depriving teams of the use of that field in that season. Similarly, they could then wait to work on a track until the teams clear off those fields in June. So that kind of a timeline gives you something that could be the best possible, both bidding cycle as well as project work timeline. That's all assuming the commit, that's the committee's wish. So if that's the committee's wish, then you probably want to commit to a path of getting design documents ready for approval by sometime in November, so that you then got 30 or 60 days to get it done on a reasonable timeline. So I think that's how you back into, if the committee wants something done next summer, they should commit to it by November. Looking at it from the other direction, I think the question is how many different pieces can the committee and the, the district swallow and accomplish over the course of a set period of time here between now and November? If that's the path. Um, so did that help? Why? Okay.
Yeah. And, and just, just to clarify the, Joe, if we on this, um, you know, acknowledging all the complications, it sounds like, if, if we wanted things to happen in a, in a fairly seamless, least in, you know, negatively impactful way, the committee should be ready to vote in, at the latest in November on, on potential plans for, um, for, for construction of, of whatever might be constructed. Is that right?
The committee would be saying, administration and design firm, please go on ahead and get detailed design documents ready for bid consisting of the following. We, we, we want a certain type of field. We want the track to be in the package or we want it to be an ad alternate. That's the kind of decision that we'd need to have in, in November in order to really make this a comfortable and just best practice type of timeline.
Yeah, thank you.
Julia. So, um, I just want to name the question. I think we keep saying, assuming this is what the committee wants to do, assuming that this is so the committee can do that, we can do this next summer. And I'm feeling a tension between, um, I understandably figuring out, can we do a streamlined process that will, um, resolve some of the outstanding questions? I, in the service of getting this done for next summer. Um, and if the answer to the first is yes, then great. But I guess the question is, how how much are we willing to potentially give up in terms of the, um, integrity of the streamlined process in order to ensure we meet a timeline for next summer? In other words, um, how important are we saying that this must be done next summer? How, how important is that to all of us? It feels like that's an underlying assumption and I don't know if that has been tested or discussed.
Curtis.
I can say that my, my opinion on that now versus my opinion on that in October could very wildly given progression of COVID data, like that's going to shape and inform all of my choices between now and October. Uh, in terms of the integrity of the process, I feel like we've, I, I don't want to be, I don't want to take for granted the work of our predecessors, being that four of us have joined this committee, uh, so very recently. And I'm remembering from some of the first meetings after I joined frustration in the voices of some community members that we've been through a lot of this and looked at the, the pros and cons of turf, turf versus, and I, I, I think we should be in a position or do what we need to, to put ourselves in a position to make an informed decision on, do we want to move forward with the turf field and the, the track as the ad alternate? Depending on what the financial picture looks like. I'm not, I, I don't, I, I guess what I'm trying to say is I don't know, uh, are we looking to perform a whole new study on turf versus soil between now and October or what? What are people?
So, yeah, so, um, thanks Curtis. So there was some discussion about, um, not, not in today's meeting, but in previous meetings about the possibility of putting together a new committee of, you know, um, looking at the potential for doing other outreach, um, things that would all take longer, that would create a process that could potentially, um, satisfy some of the folks who felt that we hadn't done enough of those kinds of things. That if the committee wants to go that route, we would be back to Julia's question of how important is it for us to be in a position where we can make a decision in October? So yeah, there is an assumption here that the committee would like to, well, it's not an assumption, it's a question. Does the committee want to be, and I apologize for not framing it because I actually did frame it that way in the finance committee, but does the committee, the school committee want to be in the position of being able to make a decision on synthetic turf slash track in October, November? And if so, is addressing this set of questions going to help get you there? Julia.
So when I think, um, I'm just gonna, my perspective here is the integrity of the process is both about getting to what we think the answers might be, but also doing that in a way that engages and involves, um, our key stakeholders. So that they feel they've been heard and their voice was a part of this conversation. And I think that's the piece that, you know, we kept hearing about in the past that didn't happen. If, for me, if that, um, if the right process takes six months, not, not three, then that's, then I would want to go for six months. If it took a year or not, not three months, I would rather go for, to, to me, the integrity of the process trumps getting this done next year. Um, especially now that we have title one or title, the title nine and ADA compliance, you know, in process. So I, I just want to name that.
Thanks, Julia. Uh, Jose.
Yeah, I, uh, was thinking about, you know, Julia's responses to, um, to the request for yet more further involvement in our sort of COVID-19 protocols. And I was just, just like, I was gonna, I'm gonna be Julia to Juliana. No, but in all, in all seriousness, I think, I think Julie's point is, is a real one. And, you know, something that we should all consider. My concern is that, uh, you know, my sense from our stakeholders and from our communities is that there's real desire for progress on this, these, uh, this, this, these issues that we've debated collectively in various iterations of school committees for a very long time now. You know, this committee, as, uh, Carrie reminded us, at least, uh, you know, did, did, did vote to move forward on all, you know, alternatives towards, uh, towards a solution. So I, I would love it if we could, you know, if this committee, you know, were happy with, just, just as you laid out, Carrie, you know, if we were happy with the answers and happy could look like many things, but if we were satisfied with the answers that we got to these questions with the means to which these answers were derived. And if we had money in the bank, you know, I, I, I would be quite excited to move forward. And that would allow hopefully this, this committee, um, you know, and hopefully future versions of it to focus on, on other issues of that, that we have to focus on. That's a long-winded way of saying, Carrie, I, the way you outlined it, um, yeah, it sounds, sounds, uh, appropriate and, uh, and effective and efficient.
Thanks, Jose. Other feedback? Christina, do you want to weigh in on this?
No, I guess my one question would be, you know, I think the difficulty in considering this right now is the difficulty in not knowing where we're going with COVID as Curtis mentioned. I mean, I would love to directly say, Jake and Joe, can we take on this big project at this point? Um, and all that's involved in going out to bid and redrawing detailed design all while trying to run the school, um, and keep all the kids healthy and safe and all that stuff. Um, but I, I don't know that there's a way to answer that because we don't know where we're going. Um, so that's just the concern that's floating in the back of my head right now.
Yep. Okay. So Christina, do you want any kind of like a straw vote or, I mean, I'm hearing, if we, if we factor in Steve from the finance committee conversation, and I think he said this before, you know, in school committee meetings as well, you know, his, I, I think it's fair to say his position is that the turf would have been very useful during COVID. Right? So that's what I think. I thought that's kind of where you were going, but the availability of surface that is usable, not just for athletics, but for also for co-curriculars and potentially for classrooms and that kind of thing. Uh, when you need outdoor space, uh, was so far heightened by COVID that, um, you know, that's, I'm sort of channeling him because he's not able, able to be here. So I don't know where you, uh, want to go with this as a committee, but I think we're kind of a little bit split. And really what it comes down to is use of administrative time right now. Right?
Yeah.
So I think that is, um, you know, something that only Jake and Joe can speak to.
Do you, how does this, you, Carrie, are you asking, and I, maybe, maybe we'll, I think your question was to Christina. Do we need a formal motion to? We don't need that. So would, would you just?
I'm really just looking for direction. I mean, the, the finance subcommittee takes its direction from the school committee. So we don't want to either do work or ask the administration to do work that the school committee doesn't support.
Can we, can we give you cartoon thumbs up? Is that P? Your version of straws?
Yeah, straw. Yeah, absolutely. Um, but I would like to hear from, from Jake, um, about, you know, there's the, the use of Joe's time now in terms, and he's, he already put in a tremendous amount of time organizing the work that had been done, um, prior to his even arriving back to the district. So, you know, he's already, he's invested that time. Uh, there's going to be more time involved with talking to other administrators and potentially addressing questions that come in from the community and, and addressing the questions that we've just raised on the screen here. And then as Christina said, there's the time needed, um, in order to facilitate from the district side on another project, which is, um, considerably larger than the one that is going on right now. Um, so I would look to the superintendent to determine, and maybe, maybe you just, maybe that's a question to leave us with tonight and come back to the finance subcommittee meeting on the 26th. Um, and, and continue that discussion. If the school committee wants, um, you know, administrative way in. So Jake, if you want to comment on that, and then Julia.
Yeah, I'll do a quick comment on that. It, yeah, my only, I guess, taking all of this in, the questions that we started the evening with, I think, did capture the questions that were out there in the community. And, and the, in questions that were either not fully answered or not fully answered to the satisfaction of people that definitely were approaching this from a well-defined position of desperately wanting the field or not wanting the field at all. My, my experience with, with for, for the people that like the outcome that the school committee comes to, that like the conclusion that the school committee comes to, they will be of the opinion that there was just, uh, just the right amount of process or there was way too much process because this is now in like year four or five of conversation. For the people that don't like the outcome, they will be firmly convinced forever that there was no process at all. And that, I, I think that's just human nature and that's like every process I've ever been a part of. That's a piece of where you wind up. So I, I don't know, you know, I'm thinking back to the, to the meeting where, uh, John Scavlon presented sort of the pro side and Stephanie presented the, 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 the against side. sort of the pro side and Stephanie presented the, 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 the against side, for lack of a better term. And, and, and that was after several years' worth of process and I think probably dozens and dozens of meetings where this was the central agenda focus. So I, I really don't know, I don't know where the process ends, except with at some point, a group of people saying, we need to make a decision on this and do something. And that, that is not in an effort to stifle anybody's voice. I think Joe and I both will do, we will make the time to do whatever the school committee wants and needs us to do. So I, I just don't have much sense though of how much process, what kind of process is right? Because going back through the years' worth of process that's already been done, I don't think minds are going to be changed or, or people are going to be brought to feel great about a conclusion that they probably didn't start feeling great about. So that's, that's where I would be. But, but obviously, we, we will always make time to do whatever the school committee needs done or wants done for the good of the community.
So, um, I totally agree with your point that some people will never feel, they will, will, that, if that was my point about the goalposts moving. And I, so the importance of defining where those goalposts are collectively in advance and then meeting those goalposts, but making sure that the definition of where those goalposts were was contributing, you know, that, that decision was contributed to by both sides is, is where I was, what I was trying to describe. I, as a new school committee member last November, stepping in and trying to synthesize all the information and all the arguments, I think there may have been good process, but the lack of minutes and the lack of understanding of what had happened and, and questions about, I mean, there were a lot of questions that were generated that are on this list that would have been addressed in a good process. And so I do think there is space here to improve the process.
Yeah.
Mike?
No, go ahead. I, I just have one point I want to make about that, that, which, which if I may, Julia, would be to say that, again, I think I have, I have seen, I think, either in watching YouTube, you know, from Willie Natter, I've seen almost all of these questions addressed. But again, when you don't like the answer or the answer doesn't fit in with what you believe is the right answer, it becomes, well, my question wasn't fully addressed. Or they don't believe that the answer that was given, and so we need to dig deeper. That's, that's my concern, is I don't think we're ever going to hit the sweet spot where everybody says, no matter what you do, I'm satisfied that, that everything has been done as well as it could absolutely be.
And it, and it may be that there is a, there's ultimately disagreement around what can be known and what can be unknown and how, and, and the comfort level with this committee or with individuals of making decisions based on having to have unknowns because they're unknown. I, what I was going to say in terms of timing, two things about Jake and Joe taking this on. One is, I actually have tremendous faith in both of you. You know, Carrie, you mentioned a committee, you know, there'd been talk of a, you know, reconstituting a, a new committee. I'm not necessarily suggesting we have a new committee from a process perspective. I have great faith in Joe and Jake to be able to listen to and understand the concerns and generate responses, you know, based on the, the research. I actually have great faith in that happening in a way that's open and balanced and garners the trust of our community and certainly of us, but also of our community. I guess the question is, and I appreciate Jake, you saying that you will, you and Joe will do whatever this committee asks of you. But I think that's a hard. Two things, one, it's an ever-evolving world right now. And I, while I appreciate that, in, you know, that response, I wonder what's coming around the corner. And two, I, I'm not sure it's clear to us what you would be giving up or not doing in order to do whatever it is that we ask of you. Because something would have to be given up, whether that's, you know, specific work in the school or sleep. Or, you know, I don't know. And I think for us to understand that trade-off would be really important.
Here's Julia, and thanks Jake. Curtis, did you want to say something before? No? Okay.
Remember now.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead, Joe.
The one thing that I'll lob in is that, that the worst case to me would be that somehow this conversation is put on the plate again in, in December. And then we, we don't manage to get it out to bid until March. And that, that's the, that's the bidding and development process, construction process that we would be going, that would be the worst case to me. Everything else is better than that. I'll, I'll, I'll just say that. So, so I think it's, it's probably most important that at some point, the committee either decides to take this on within next summer's construction cycle or defer until a later year. I think that, that's the, you know, the one absolute to me, everything else is gray.
And that's a decision that we can make in October, right? Yeah, because that's the vote, right? Either we move it forward or, or we don't. The question is, how, how do we get there in a way that is efficient, effective, and moves us forward? So I'm going to just say that we're gonna, the Finance Subcommittee is going to move forward with this process. And that further conversation can take place in those Finance Subcommittee meetings. It doesn't mean we're committing to anything right now, right? Let's be clear about that. No one's committing anyone to anything. We're just saying that our goal is to be able to make a decision in October. And we can change our minds about that, right? We can say no, at any point, we can say that's not our goal, our, our, our goal. We're, right now, we're putting the whole thing on hold for another year and a half. We could say that at any point. But I'm hearing enough voices in support of the process that, you know, let's move forward for now. We meet again, the Finance Subcommittee meets again in two weeks, and we'll see where we are at that point. Folks who want to weigh in further, I think, after this meeting, should talk to Jake. Can also email Christina. Feeling a little protective of Joe's time, but, you know, obviously, people will reach out to him directly as well. Which he says is fine. Jose, did you want to say something more?
Yeah, just a, a brief question. I, I, and I'll just, I think I, I probably made this, this point earlier. I, I, I'm excited about this, Carrie, about us moving forward, even in this very small way. The question I have is, is regarding this timeline and when the full committee can expect answers to the questions as, as you've laid them out for us. So the Finance Subcommittee will, between now and, and, you know, September or October, have answers for us. The second set of questions that I think the full committee has delegated to Jake and Joe, are we now expecting them to return answers back to us about those questions by October? Is that, is, is that what we are asking of them? I would, I just want to make that explicit. And, and, and think about, you know, I'm worried about bandwidth and, and, and all of that. But I just want to, is, is that what we've just, if we move forward, is that what we're asking of them?
Right, so the hope would be to have a conversation about the financial questions in the August 26th meeting. If they ha, if Jake and Joe have been able to put together any information on the other questions at that time, we will talk about them in the Finance Subcommittee. Otherwise, they'll come to the committee, they'll come to the next Finance Subcommittee meeting, which would probably be right before the next school committee meeting. So it's one of the two of those, either two weeks or four weeks, I guess, is the answer to your question. Rather than October. Does that make sense? Joe, I'm gonna look at you since you're the one who's gonna be, yeah. I would want, I, I don't want to wait till October because October is really your first opportunity as a committee to take a vote on this. And that's when we'll have the, you know, the, a better handle on what is available to us financially. So better to have this information prior to that. But October would be the latest. I feel like I really want to turn this agenda back to Christina if it's okay with you, buddy.
Okay, thank you, Carol. Really appreciate it.
Yeah.
Okay, next up on the agenda is the Business Administrator Report. So we get to hear from Joe Bergeron.
I have only two things. Oh, Curtis, were you?
Wasn't there one more Finance Subcommittee item, the lease? Did we cover?
That's under my, my, that's under this, whatever it is, yeah. So Fields Project Update, Noon's Construction has been on site. They've been doing quick, quick work. We have two, two deadlines that are embedded within the contract that they're operating under. The first is to complete work that you, you might see them working on this week, which is all of the drainage that needs to run through the outfield of the JV baseball field, which is the area directly adjoining the parking lot as you look to, across that, towards John Allen Field. So you see a bunch of heavy equipment out there, they're laying drainage pipe, getting ready to tie it into the other side of those fields. That has an August 22nd deadline on it because we, we do need all of our student athletes to be ready to be able to walk out of the parking lot, down that path that's adjoining the parking lot and use all of those fields that are contiguous as you go through the initial field there, then John Allen Field, and then the soccer field that's in the outfield of the varsity baseball field. So by August 22nd, the goal is to make sure that Noon's turns that portion of the campus over so that it can be used from there on out by our student athletes as they go through preseason and then into their first games in early September. So that's part one. Part two is then Noon's will be backed into the baseball and softball fields that, that stretch the line that runs, you know, a little bit closer to the, the administrative building back through the varsity baseball field, along with the road that will be there to provide access to all of that field complex. So Noon's will then be, be focusing on that from August through September with a turnover date of October 4th, which is in time for our cross-country team to host its first home meet on. And I just want to make sure I get this exact date right. I was working with Lindsay on it today so that I wouldn't. On October 13th, for a five-school meet that is, that is, that has recently been scheduled. So we were able to delay our first cross-country meet until that, our first home cross-country meet until that point in time, with Noon's promising to turn over that portion of the campus by then. We are in constant conversation with Noon's about the possibility of trying to get at least a swath through the future varsity softball fields outfield so that the cross-country team could actually practice on its full official course prior to that October 4th date, but there are no promises there. So they've, the, the construction team has been very, I think, willing to put people into place on a timeline and with, with the volume that is necessary to try to, try to make that happen. So that's what we're operating under right now. We will get our first invoice and requisition in early September for the work that they've been doing. So that's something that the committee can look forward to at that point in time. And we will have more updates for the Finance Committee later in August and for the full school committee in September. Are there any questions about this at the moment? Okay, next.
All right, I just want to say one thing that we, we didn't quite get to talk about in the Finance Committee meeting was, you know, what kind of reporting this, the school committee should get from the Finance Committee on things like, you know, actual finances. So, you know, we could have monthly reports. I'm, I'm sure Joe is planning quarterly reports. So we will plan to talk about that at the next Finance Subcommittee, just to let you know. And the FY, sorry, the FY '21 closeout report, all that good stuff. So there's more happening.
All right, but anything else about our beloved Fields? Nothing at the moment. Okay. Next up on the agenda, in your packet, you have a lease agreement ready for execution for a Pitney Bowes mailing machine that is slated for installation at West. It is before you because any agreement that we enter into that is longer than three years, this one is a five-year agreement, needs to go before the local governing body. And you all are the local governing bodies. So I do need a vote to allow us to enter into that type of a contract. I think, I believe it's 120.
12804.
12804 a month for five years. So it's not as though we are committing the district to hundreds of thousands of dollars, but it is a five-year agreement, so it's something that does need to come before you. So all I would need, if you are willing, is to move a motion to accept the Pitney, the Pitney Bowes five-year lease agreement that was in your packet.
So moved.
Julia moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Curtis seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Bo and I.
Henry, I.
On St. Zina.
Elfin, by an eye.
Green, I.
We lost Ursula. That motion passes. Did anyone see Ursula drop off? Oh, boy. Okay.
And that's all I had.
Great, thank you. Next up on the agenda is the approval of annual overview of proposed agenda items. This was formerly known as the master calendar. Jake and Stacy, with feedback from a lot of folks on this committee, changed the format of this to hopefully be easier to understand, removing the grids and all of the confusion with different colors and everything else. So we are looking for a motion to approve the annual overview of proposed agenda items.
I'll move to approve it, and then I have a question.
Okay, green moves. Do I, sorry, Carrie moves. Do I have a second?
I'll second. This is Ursula. Sorry.
Second, no problem. Okay. Carrie?
So I'm wondering if it makes sense to add in all of the Finance Committee deadlines here. I don't think they're all here. Maybe they are, and I just didn't. I don't think they're all here. Maybe they are, and I just didn't quite notice them. Or whether it makes sense to have any kind of a separate column specifically for, for finance, you know, grants. I mean, I see grant updates. Yeah, I don't know. Joe, is there anything that is specific to finance that isn't on here that should be?
I think that there are many things that are related to finance that are here, but I also look forward to the conversations that the finance committee hopefully will have over the next couple of months about additional best practices that we'd like to implement and codify as a district. I think that, you know, we, we can always add to this. We, we won't be taking anything away.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Julia.
I think the same idea might be in place for the policy subcommittee. We talked about having some sort of regular review. And I just wonder if our policy, our next policy subcommittee meeting could discuss where we'd want to be, where we'd want to see our policy, you know, anything that we want on the agenda as well. So we can be planning for it.
Great. Any other questions, comments?
Do we need to add in the review of the or something you want to do later? The principals. That's a question for Jake, I guess.
I couldn't hear most of that, Carrie. I'm sorry. I don't know if it was just me or.
Yeah, I was just asking about whether to add in the review of the district, sorry, the school handbooks, or do you want to wait until after you talk to the principals about that? You talked about maybe doing that in July.
Yeah, we, let me talk with them, but that should be on here. You know, there, there is a review, and I, and I think the, 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 your legal obligation is to approve the high school yearbook. Any school that has grades nine through 12, you're legally obligated to approve. So we'll, we'll wrap our heads around administratively how we want that, and then we can come back with a proposal for when. Yeah.
And my, my other suggestion was that perhaps this, you know, could end up as a Google Doc that could be linked on every school committee agenda so that the public and also the school community members could just be reminded monthly of what's coming up and when the meetings are. But I like the format.
Okay, any other? Discussing?
Was Jose's hand up? Did I see that somewhere?
It, it was withdrawn as well. Thanks, Jake.
Okay.
Thanks, Jake. Okay, no further discussion? All in favor?
Bo and I.
Conry, I.
Constantine, I.
Elfin, by an I.
Green, I.
Blue, I.
Great, thank you. That motion passes. Okay, next up on our agenda, and we're getting there, guys, is the discussion regarding future school committee meetings, in-person, virtual, and hybrid. As most of you know, we, there's an extension on our ability to have remote meetings through April of 2022. I know right now, and Carrie could probably speak to this a little bit further, maybe Jake. The town of Williamstown, their select board is grappling with the concept of having some type of hybrid meetings in, in order to accommodate, you know, the, the board itself meeting in person and also allowing the flexibility and ability for the public to zoom into meetings, which has increased participation in a lot of municipal meetings across the country, quite frankly. So that's something we need to talk about. I think some of the recommendations, obviously, that we're, we're hearing about masking indoors makes right now for us to meet physically as, as a committee very difficult. We've tried it in the past where we met in the room. I've even forgotten the number. I think it's A109. Shouldn't have forgotten. But we tried to meet in that room six feet apart with masks on, and it was difficult for us to actually communicate to each other and also for the listening public to hear what we were saying. So that's something also to consider. Carrie, Jake, is there anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, I mean.
Go ahead, Carrie. Please, go ahead. I was just gonna, I was just gonna thank you for texting me to shut off my screen sharing because I zoned out. So thank you. I would just say that, that we need to, you know, we, we would need to dig in and do some work with, with Rob and Cody and, and make sure that anything we want to do works before we go back to that. I, I would tend to be with you that I'm not convinced now is the right time to, to look at going back to in-person meetings. But, but we will start getting a plan together with Rob for how we could do hybrid meetings. Certainly. And we can talk about that in September, October.
Carrie.
So I think the problem with hybrid meetings is that we now have this mask policy back in place, and I just can't imagine trying to have an in-person meeting and be, think that it would be heard by, so the public has a, has a right to hear what's being said. And I think it's problematic when everyone who's speaking is masked. So, I mean, my own position would be that until, my previous position was until we were all able to be in a room together, it didn't make sense, right? So at that point, there were limits on how many people could be in a room. And now we're in a different position where we're not necessarily limited by how many people can be in the meeting room, but we are required to wear masks when we're in the meeting room, which may not be a problem hearing each other, but may be a problem for the public being able to hear what we're saying. I'm not sure about that. I, I, I think I heard that the voices were muffled when they came over, you know, a recording. So that would be a concern for me. I don't feel the need to meet in person until we're clear of, you know, the, the restrictions, but the reason it came up, I think, for the select board, I think they were, they were initially thinking that they had to meet in person, but couldn't figure out a way to get the public to be able to participate remotely. And it's just really hard to do both at the same time. I know Willie Net is working on it. The select board subsequently went back to meeting remotely. So I, like I said, I know Willie Net's working on it. It was a big point of contention at one of the select board meetings. As great as it would be to be in a room with everybody, I'm, I'm not feeling any urgency around this.
Ursula?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, I'm, I'm more than anyone, I think, would like to get off Zoom and be back in person, but I, I agree, it just doesn't feel like the right time with kind of where we're going as far as, you know, trying to mask up more. And just anecdotally, I was on, I had jury duty mid-June, and I was chosen on a trial, and I spent two weeks in a courtroom, which was being held in the Holiday Inn for social distancing reasons. And everybody was wearing masks, and while they were trying to get in front of mics, it was very hard to hear. When you can't see people's mouths, it's muffled. We were all distanced. It was horrible. So it just doesn't make sense. At least on Zoom, we can hear each other and see each other, you know? So I would say I agree. Let's, let's give it a little time and see what happens.
So I guess, um, it, it makes sense. I mean, it gives Rob and Cody some time to see what Willie Net's doing and see what other people come up with in terms of creating an effective hybrid meeting. And we, again, we have until April of 2022 to figure that out. So it gives them some time. It gives us some, some freedom. And we, we see what happens with, with COVID, quite frankly, right? I mean, it is the, the elephant in the room. Okay, anything else on that, Curtis?
It did occur to me that while we're doing this on Zoom, the public opinion, public comment, sorry, portion, when we ask for public comment and say to raise your virtual hand, I think perhaps we should give a brief scripted explanation of how to do that at, when we enter the public comment portion of the meeting, because we didn't have a whole lot of people at, at this meeting, but it did occur to me that when I have my students do it, I have to explain to them how to do it. So just a brief statement of we're in the public comment portion on Zoom. If you would wish to give public comment, if you look on the participants list, which you can access by clicking the participants button below, you'll see there's a raise hand button. If you push that button, we will see your hand is raised. We'll give you a minute to do that. Just as like a little boilerplate thing to, right at the beginning of the public comment section, because it's certainly not intuitive from a new user standpoint. We have no idea who's at each meeting, so.
That's a great idea, and I think we should use your radio voice to explain it.
Record it.
Except it's moved to reactions for a lot of us, which makes it even more confusing.
I find it easier to find because when you're the host, you can't raise your hand. Yeah. So now I can raise my hand, which is kind of nice.
Well, yeah, maybe how you have either the raise hand button or the reactions tab. If you have a question, you can hit the thumbs up on my reactions tab. There's no hand. It's just this. Yeah, I have a question. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Curtis. Okay, next up on the agenda, our upcoming meetings, we have August 26th at 4:00 PM. There's a finance subcommittee meeting. August 28th at 9:00 AM, we have a school committee workshop with Dorothy Presser of MASC. September 9th at 4:00, we have a finance subcommittee meeting. And September 9th at 6:00, we have our regular school committee meeting. Agenda requests? Anybody have any agenda requests? Okay, and I have no other items for discussion. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I moved.
Julia moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Curtis seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Bo and I.
Conry, I.
Constantine, I.
Elfin, by an I.
Green, I with a reminder that the motion to adjourn is a non-debatable motion. So you don't have to ask for discussion. You just move on.
Great. Thank you for that reminder.
Blue, I.
Okay, thank you. It is 9:22. And we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for your time. Be, be cool.
Like, what's the saying? Any meeting you can walk away from is a good meeting?